Okay, all right. So good evening, everybody. This is our good afternoon. This is a meeting of the Town of Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission. Thursday, October thirteenth. We have one postponement, which is item ten two thirty-nine Greenwich Avenue LP. For a site plan to create a rooftop terrace at that address. And then we have one withdrawal, which is one twenty-five Greenwich Avenue LLC for a final site plan. To add floors to an existing building at one twenty-five Greenwich Avenue to create affordable on eight thirty G. And those are the only two I have.
With one fifty-one Hamilton Avenue also.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Number fourteen.
Great. I missed that. Okay. Well, thank you for letting me know. I was just making extensive notes on that one. Okay, so well, as you heard, one fifty-one Hamilton Avenue, which is Salvatore Giselle for convert for adding a second structure to an existing behind an existing one family house in the R six. Also this evening, Mr. McRae will be absent and Mr. Wells will be seated on all the applications. And with that, we will start our first item as a discussion item of the proposed open space plan for the town of Greenwich. I oh, I was just gonna say I'm not seeing Madam Sesto. Hello, Madam Sesto. And you have several people here who are interested in hearing what you have to say. If you would like to recap for us what's transpired since last we spoke and then we'll jump in.
Terrific. Thank you. Since we last spoke, we have had further discussions led by Margarita with the town council. Who has said that for the open space plan to be a legitimate addendum to the P O C D. That P and Z needs to bring it through the RTM. So we are on hopeful target for that to be a December activity. In the meantime, we want to make amendments to the plan that planning and zoning sees fit so that it can be a more useful document to you all. Margarita has submitted comments to me and then I Katie and I had a conversation with regards to facilitating guiding principles to have the open space plan better mirror or reflect the setup of the P O C D. So I provided those to Katie this after late this afternoon. I don't know if she was able to distribute them or not.
No worries. We we haven't seen them. I haven't seen them. Usually the email volume, the afternoon of a meeting is pretty heavy and there's there's stuff on the applications we I've missed. I know I've missed a few in the applications. That's fantastic. So we'll take a look at that and maybe we can send you feedback. One of the things that we wanted to talk to you about is this idea of you adding guiding principles and tying it to the P O C D came from what we began to realize was the immense power that we the open space plan would have once it's approved as an amendment to the P O C D. Because it becomes a reference document whenever we approve an MI. And or consider an MI. Now, that means that in addition to all the other things you've been thinking about when we're reviewing an MI. What do you you know, what does the Conservation Commission? What is your department? What do you? What are the things that we should use as our pegs is our hanging points? So we say, well, this is consistent with the P O C D, including the open space plan because it boom, boom, boom. What? One of the questions, and maybe this is a hot topic that should not be touched. The elimination of pervious surface in the process of an MI. We have language in the P O C D. But do you want to make that when you're losing green space with an MI? Do you want to add some reference points to that? So the commission can better judge it? The next hot topic would be, and it's fine if you don't want to touch it. I'm just going to raise it. What would you do with artificial turf? On the school grounds, for example. Would you have a Katie's laughing because she knows that I get frustrated because we've never had an answer on this. But on town owned property, should we have at least some considerations for the commission? So that artificial turf is okay, as long as it doesn't, you know, doesn't take up too much percent, whatever you would want to put. It becomes it. It really makes it a legacy document, which is what do you want to have there when we're considering an MI and we're considering something in the municipality?
I would actually initially raise the question of the discussion of impervious surfaces as part of the open space plan. The appropriateness of that. The open space plan is geared towards evaluating parcels non-development or partial preservation would be of value to the town.
And can you word that in a way that when we're deciding an MI? It's right there in front of us. And we can say, as we do, and this is what Katie probably sent you in the email. Guiding principles, six point five of the open space plan indicates this so that what you've left us with is the ability to consider these facts in a logical and standardized manner. So anything that you want to do. That's what I wanted to because it makes the open space plan is now going to be much more powerful.
Thinking of it in terms, so we sniff it specifically did not include school grounds, be they public or private. Are more intense ball fields. So in terms of MI, are you thinking if one of the schools came in, for example, for improvements? That there would be references to the open space plan?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so those properties are not presently part of it.
But that's an option that you have as we evolve how we're going to go to the RTM with this. You don't have to do it. I'm just throwing it out there that you that the it gives the open space plan the capability of impacting any municipal improvement. And how would you impact municipal improvements? Or do you guys want to be silent on it? If conservation wants to be silent? Okay. We'll do what we were doing before, but if you want to have an impact on municipal improvements, this is the opportunity.
That's an interesting question.
So you think about it, I you know, what what would you want to do? I would guess quite a few people would be interested in jumping on it. Even if it's in general terms, you probably don't want to propose things that are very controversial because you you we may end up with a lot of opposition to things that are.
Yeah, we did. Tried that in two thousand fifteen. Didn't go well.
I was there for that. It's always I always love to hear the description of how those events went down in retrospect. So so that's the thing. And what does the town agree? The town agrees on protecting green space on protecting. I heard the first selectman discuss it today. He is as he was giving feedback on the P O C D KPIs. Interested in protecting pervious surface, interested in protecting trees and open space. How do we ensure? Is there a way that the open space plan as it's approved can be tapped for that? If it becomes too controversial, I would say to you, it's not probably a battle worth fighting. But if you can think of things that are possible. There you go. And then we're looking forward to reading it. That's all I've got.
One, one thing that that we did get a chance to discuss this afternoon is keeping things general enough. That they are really overriding principles like we discussed because you know, there there could be an instance, we recently just talked about affordable housing versus open space. But there could be instances in the future where it's public safety versus open space. There's always going to be some trade offs. So we talked about the idea of keeping it general. I think it might be valuable if it's okay if Miss Sasso, if you could just read the kind of headlines of the guiding principles you put forth and just maybe go just summarize a little bit that page that you put together because I think it'll give the commission a flavor of the direction and either it's it's positive or it's negative. But I think it I really liked the direction you were going in, but obviously it's the commission who has to take that forward.
The commission, yes. So in Katie, I had a conversation today. I'm trying to wrap my head around the open space plan, the MI process. So this is just the first pass because I'm not entirely sure that I I feel like I understand better now that we've initiated or brought on this.
We all do. To be honest, when we started this dialogue with you. I was of two minds and I started talking to council and you know, I said one thing and council said, no, no, no. So we've all been learning in this process. So please, I'm sorry, because in a way we're in we're moving forward and learning at the same time.
Yes, we are. Here's the way.
A council had a very strong opinion, as you know, on how to move forward, which I had not expected. So what were you? Yes. So go ahead.
So the guiding principles. This first pass, the guiding principles reflects more what the intent of the open space plan as it is presently written. And the MI thinking on it would need to be further incorporated if that's the direction we decide to go. So the guiding principle one would be sustain and prove our natural environment and landscape to foster community identity. This pulled right from the P O C D. There was two guiding principles that you all had already incorporated that reflected why we would have an open space plan. And this particular guiding principle that's that open space has an essential element in guiding the town's character and its desirability to live here. Identifying Long Island sounds are rolling hills, that sort of thing. Guiding principle number two is that we would be preserving undeveloped land to protect valuable ecological services. This was an important concept of that that I hope that the plan brings forward. That our undeveloped land is not just fallow. It is working for us in its passive really important way. And this states that developed landscape is a source of concentrated and diffuse pollution and eliminates the ability to support a wide variety of wildlife. Undeveloped land can ameliorate the impacts of pollution from atmospheric deposition, noise like heat and stormwater runoff, management of pollution in our air and water is essential for public health and maintaining safe ample drinking water supply. Natural landscapes also support wildlife needed to sustain our flora foster soil formation processes, promote decomposition, pollinate and more. The next guiding principle speaks to climate resiliency, which we've been working on separately with regards to the coast, but that is an inland issue as well. Sea level rise, changing storm characteristics and other atmospheric alterations challenge the developed landscape. Open spaces can reduce the impacts by providing flood storage, groundwater replenishment and stabilization and lessen the impact due to climate extremes. Mature vegetation is critical to absorbing stormwater, stabilizing temperatures and holding the land in place, literally. Stormwater is detained and infiltrated on undeveloped land to the benefit and protection of down gradient properties, groundwater supply and water course base flows. Guiding principle. The next is to add to our open space inventory to provide more recreation opportunities. I think that's self explanatory. And then the last again pulling from the P O C D. Guiding principle to preserve our community character and sense of place. I pulled pretty much the language as written in the P O C D. Altering it to focus specifically on open space. Highlighting the fact that planning for what will not be development is equally important to planning what we will develop.
Okay, and and so, for example. Oh, Katie, I don't think this is illegal of me to say, but you can always mute me or something. So, for example, in these, and I think they sound fantastic, Pat. I think this is the direction that we really want to move in. I agree with Katie. Now, we get an MI before us to do the the sidewalk extensions on the avenue. One of the key objections to those sidewalk extensions was the loss of the lawn in front of the Haven Meyer building. Now, so as we're looking at the MI. Is there going to be something that says if you're losing cherished open space? That is part of a neighborhood. For example, and and how would you do that? And and how would we word that? Another one would be an area where I'm gonna not say where this municipal improvement is, but an area where it has been treasured in a neighborhood because it gives people access. It's a a small park that gives people some access to outdoor space. And now it's going to be heavily developed. How do we judge that loss of access? I heard when they were presenting the KPIs for the P O C D today to the Board of Selectmen, they were talking about everybody should have access to some green space within, I think it was an eighth of a mile Janet Stone McWhiggan is here and can correct me, but access to the green space. How do we protect that and value it? So how do we consider that? In the MI. These are public lands that give a neighborhood its opportunity for some green space and the health outcomes. And and here you're crossing a line because you're not as interested in the health outcomes of residents. But you know, all the research is there that when you lose access to the so those things. So we had one MI now being referred back to the RTM, and this is one of the points of contention is this issue of the loss of the law. Another MI when it comes in, I believe that that MI will also be very contentious for the similar reason. How do we peg to something that helps us make a sound decision?
This raises a very good point in what our plan doesn't say and should say. At the very least, in the guiding principles and more to the point also in the document itself is our responsibility. Once we have open space. That is our responsibility to preserve and steward it. So that is an excellent point that we have not covered. And this would come for big.
I wouldn't have articulated as well as you just did. I didn't realize that what I was saying, but yes, that's perfect. That's absolutely perfect. Yes, that's the question we're asking. One of the things we're asking you is, and how do we go about that?
I don't want to be kind of funny coming from the conservation director. I don't want to be presumptuous to say that always preserving undeveloped land owned by the town. And you know, we do have the problem, the town that our land has not been either deed restricted or officially classified as open space. A lot of it is we considered open space and the plan goes into reliance on how we came to have open space. Like Bruce Park, it was gifted to the town as open space. I think we would be remiss to do anything other than that. But we so we have to rely on, I'll call it town morals. These other open spaces are undeveloped pieces of land that the town owns or may own in the future. It would be presumptuous of me to say that the maintaining its uses open space is always the right decision.
But if we had criteria helps.
Criteria helps. And I'm going to say public health is going to it's criteria to weigh against or along with other criteria.
Right. See, I think the trick the trickiest part about all of this is not being too specific that you pitch and haul yourself, but not being too general that it becomes useless. That's that's really the tricky part. And I think you know, when we were chatting before, we were talking about the four things that happen in an MI. It's acquisition leases of land, public intersect major intersection improvements and buildings. And we did discuss breaking that out, but again, I think that then gets too specific. And so you know, it's that's why I think the direction you that you've taken your guiding principles so far is the right direction to just keep it broad enough. Understanding that that there will be trade offs.
Yep. Would it helped if we had a guiding principle, going back to the the guiding principles, our responsibility to preserve and steward our open space, both big and little. And then mention in the in potential future debates of change of youth in the face of critical infrastructure for the town or climate resiliency that consideration be given to why the land was preserved to begin with and what the criteria might be for altering it. Would that speak to what you're trying to get to?
Folks, anybody want to weigh in? I know, Arne, you look like you're engaged.
No, just trying to say maybe keep it general. Don't give examples because this is going to last for a while, but so maybe other priorities that the time the town at the time may may outweigh the need for for open space and just keep it like that and not not narrow it down to infrastructure, affordable housing or whatever.
And give it criteria.
And I would say rareness, like on the rare occasion where, you know, right, you want to put that the bar is high for altering open space, high.
Exactly.
Right. And there's public hearings and there there are opportunities for people to weigh in. There's a process that allows for discussion. So we could say that too. And then the process we can, if you actually mentioned that there's a process by which people can be that, you know, an application for development of some sort could be reviewed and and that process will allow us to evaluate the.
Okay, Peter Levy, you're breaking up, but he's saying, I think we're all saying kind of the same thing. So I know we're asking you to kind of turn on a dime at this. You've been working on this for probably as long as we worked, yes, as long as we worked on the. Oh, he kept talking. Peter, we lost a big chunk of you. So I know you've been working on it for years. I know how we felt when we got the P O C D into the RTM and we'd been working on it for three years and people were like, so why don't you do this? But here it's really becomes a legacy document because and I say that, Pat, because you go from because of your own transition here, you're going to come back to Greenwich. Maybe in five years and you take a look at us and you say, okay, that's what they did with this and you're going to see it because it's going to be for as long as the current P O C D is alive, which is twenty twenty nine. You will see the decisions that were made that referred to both the existing P O C D and and the open space plan. And we are pretty religious about that. And I think all commissions will be.
Okay.
So if we can lighten the load for you, but sometimes getting our input is not as much helpful as we think it might be.
This is just this conversation has tremendously broadened my understanding of the the piece that you're thinking this open space plan could do that it's not. And I think conservation would be happy to have this plan facilitate your decision making in the future.
See, that's the power of it, the power of being. And that's what when suddenly I said to Katie, you know, I think council is right and we really need to brave it, go to the RTM and do this. The power of it is making it part of the MI process. If we can integrate it into our decision making, it's unfortunate that we can't. You know, we don't, we can't integrate it anymore to all side plants, but the MI is the MI is guide the growth of the town. And you're looking at several schools about to be rebuilt.
Yes.
And you're looking at some major projects and a shortage of recreation space. How do we react to that? All that help. And of course, you know, Maya, particular obsession of all the people who died with COVID because they're they didn't live in neighborhoods that had access to green space and that even a little few trees make a difference. Myra Clackenbrick has had her hand up. She's the only member of the public that does. So is the commission okay with my calling on her?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm just gonna do Myra, you just went away. Oh. Okay, there she is. All right. Myra, I'm just gonna, I have a, I'm just gonna, oops. Oh, okay. Somebody got you already. Go ahead.
Thank you. I I just wanted to say that the minute you create a pinhole opening for trading open space for other priorities. It will be torn open to allow whole trucks to pass through. And what I would suggest instead is that you go in the other direction. How do you frame open space to make it virtually invulnerable to these kinds of trade offs? I think it has to be super strict. Instead of devising ways to compromise it from the get go.
Yes, and but I think you've making an excellent point that you need to have firm language that is already in the P O C D and is already in the open space plan. That we are about protecting green space and Greenwich and trees and permeable surfaces and climate resilience. That said, you've also got to count a little bit on you having good planning and zoning commissions that are always aware of a very technical term called the slippery slope.
Yeah.
And we're very aware of that. And in fact, I wanted to change a regulation the other day and Katie said, oh, no, no, because if you do that, then eight people are going to go and do this. And so, okay, I got it. So we generally know that human beings are prone to pushing the envelope. So but I agree, you're making an excellent point. So it's food for thought, whatever y'all can do. I I know I'm making the process longer, but I feel the result will be more powerful.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Myra. Gives I see it actually as a another layer of protection to our open existing open space. I feel quite confident, open space that we acquire in the future. If we are fortunate enough to have a bargain sale or a gift, it's going to come with restrictions. The having land donated unrestricted, I think is a thing of the past. Where a tested community, we have less land. And the my my faith is that we're just going to have more restrictions when we acquire land from here on out. I think the vulnerabilities perhaps would be the land that we've acquired behind us. And then even the land we acquire ahead of us. You know, open space isn't everybody's priority. And sometimes there is parcels of land that you know, if we could carve out two acres to put in a ball field or move that fire station or meet some other community need and broaden the base for the overall protection. That can be advantageous to. There's no, no two deals that are the same.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, I think we're on the same page. I think the guiding principles are great. I think having that reference. It's so many times and to Myra's point. So many times that we get stuck with the trade offs and Myra's right. You don't want to make it too easy. You might as well hold everybody's feet to the fire. You don't want to get stuck with the trade offs. You want to do what's right for your community and the more criteria you have, the better. Okay. All right. So you know, you're welcome to come to us anytime you want. The other thing is if you want to have a workshop with all of our immense input and help, because I know we'll just save you all sorts of time. If you've ever been to any meeting that Katie thinks is only going to last twenty five minutes with the commission.
How about I will give a pass at these guiding principles. I will share them with Katie and Margarita. And then I will take my guidance from you two as far as how close I am to what you think the commission as a whole is looking for. And if you want a workshop, happy to be there for it. Documents tend to get better. Can be painful. They tend to get better.
Yeah, well, good for you for being. I know how we felt when we started at the eleventh hour revising the P O C D after three years. It was rough. So thank you for that.
Sure.
All right. So we'll see you soon. And thanks, everybody for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll go back to discussion items afterwards. That was the only discussion item right now. Now we're going to do regular items. Our next item is Lauren Maybaum for a final coastal site plan to replace an existing single family home with a new one at sixty-five Steamboat Road. And Mr. Brower, if you would kindly go ahead.
Good afternoon, Eric Brower on behalf of the applicant. This is our first presentation, but actually this was quite thoroughly reviewed at the last briefing session. This is our first presentation, but actually, this was quite thoroughly reviewed at the last briefing session.
That's cheating. You know that, right?
Well, actually, in this case, it made it work out, I think, a lot better because the issues that were all raised at that briefing session identified exactly what was going to be required to pull this together. There's some complicated parts to the project. But I think having worked on it and with all the different town departments and hearing the commission's briefing comments at yesterday's briefing, I think we finally have things resolved where the department seemed comfortable with allowing this to go forward, subject to all the details that identified as part of the zoning permit sign off process. So we feel comfortable with that.
If I may, I had a question yesterday that I just wanted to get clarity on. D P W had determined that the site has a private storm drain and requests a grant of of the right to drain the watershed area to be created. And D P W has has provided comments dated 10/5 regarding the storm drain line that crosses the parcel and you want to complete and wanted a complete draft document to be submitted prior to the zoning building permanent approval. Are those two items okay with you?
Yeah. So what the situation there today is that the pipe serves the town drainage coming off of Steamboat Road. And there never has been an easement ever provided for that. So how it came about years ago, no one knows, but we know there is in fact no easement. And the D K F D P W comments break it down into three parts. If there's an easement, if there's not an easement, and if there's going to be a new easement, you know, how you handle it. So so there is no easement, and we'd be happy to, as part of that process, create one which will be a benefit for the town.
Okay. So you are all set with that. All righty, anybody on the commission have any questions on this application? No questions from the commission. Does anybody in the public wish to speak about 655 Steamboat Road at this time? No comments from the public. Does anybody object to this application being closed at this time? Seeing no objection, this application is hereby closed, and I'm going to put forward a resolution on it. In regard to the final coastal site plan to replace an existing single family home with a new single family home and maintain a detached two car garage on a 9,295 square foot property located at 65, 655 Steamboat Road in the R six zone. The applicant has submitted a residential tear down exemption certification signed on 62222 by a licensed Connecticut engineer showing a 282 square foot decrease to the site's impervious coverage. The town's engineering division has determined that the site has a private storm drain and has requested a grant to the of the right to drain the watershed area to be created. The department also provided comments regarding the storm drain line across the parcel and requested a complete draft document be submitted prior to the zoning building approval. The applicant has agreed to both of these. The sewer division issued comments dated 10/60, 10/622 with no objection to P and Z's approval. The conservation has department submitted comments dated 9/9, noting support as the applicant will be expanding the native planting areas along the seawall. The applicant is to work with staff regarding the proposed coastal buffer. The project engineer revised the drainage plan to include the driveway area in front of the existing garage for water quality treatment. The I W W A issued a green sheet sign off dated 4/14/22. Deep issued comments on 7/20, noting that project modifications submitted addressed the storm water management related issues raised in their 7/14 email. On the 4th of October, the zoning enforcement officer issued comments noting no concerns. And finally, staff observed visible sink holes forming along the edge and lower portion of the existing seawall. The applicant has agreed to evaluate the integrity of the seawall prior to the new construction. If the seawall should be replaced, every effort will be made to complete the work before access is hindered by the new dwelling. The applicant noted in an email dated 9/6 that the seawall will be evaluated by a qualified professional prior to any construction activity. And all necessary permits are to be obtained for the works from D E P. And therefore, we move, I move approval of this application. Do I have a second?
Second.
That was?
Me, Arn.
Mr. Wells has seconded. Mr. Yaski, how do you vote?
Hi.
Mr. Lowe?
Hi.
Mr. Wells?
Hi.
Mr. Levy?
Hi.
Albin is also I. And with that, the application passes five nothing. Thank you very much, Mr. Brower.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Our next application is 20 West Brother One LLC for a final subdivision to confirm two separate and distinct zoning lots exist at 20 West Brother Drive in the R 20. Hello, Mr. Liebman.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the commission, Larry Lieben representing the applicant. We were present during the briefing, so we understand that your questions were, you know, we are completely amenable to filing the Mylar on the land records. This is this application is to find that there are two buildings to to confirm that there are two lots there. I spent a good part of the day today looking in the land records. And almost everybody in Millbrook references an S G minor map dated on 1923. That was that has never been filed on the land record, but that's what the way that Millbrook subdivision was created. We believe that the, we believe what was stated in the in in the briefing that it is two lots. It has always been held as two separate lots and with a vacant lot, it will be going through the wetlands process where everything is going to be relooked at again. And it's up to your agency. If you would like us to come back to the zoning commission, we shall. We believe that staff can handle it, but if that's what the agency requests, then that's what will happen. And we'll file Mylar with all of the requested notes. Blood zones, the right to drain, all of the notes that D P W has requested. The sewer, the sewer has already we have sent in the letter saying that the applicant has read it and agrees to comply. If the project has been reviewed by Jody, but by zoning enforcement, by sewer, by conservation. There was some naval comments that came in regarding the history of flooding and so on and so forth regarding that area of town. And we will once there's a plan that gets developed, they will have to review and pass muster of D P W once it, once it gets submitted. And I'm here to answer any questions that anyone might have.
I think this was the biggest concern yesterday as we discussed it at the briefing. The the concern we have is, of course, that Millbrook sees a lot of of flooding that you have this this waterway. What are the commission's thoughts? This will go to wetlands? Right, Mr. Liebman?
Yes, it has to.
Has to go to wetlands. Wetlands is going to address the environmental issues. They do an excellent job of that. A D P W will see it again. Staff will see it. And we could just leave it as is. And if staff has a concern, they could always kick it to us.
Right. We have no objection to that either.
All right.
I have a question on on the violation that was cited. And I wondered whether the steps have commenced to to abide by their restoration recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. The order has been issued.
Excuse me a second. Specifically, whether or not the rocks had been removed and the disturbed area returned to its original grade.
That's going to take place probably next week. I mean, once the order was issued, there is the, we have to submit plans to them. They have to review it. And it's the same plan, but that was that is definitely underway and it will be done by next week.
This, this, the accessory structure that you now have a variance from from Z B A. Has that enabled you to keep that accessory structure for the project development so that it is accessory on development? Or will you eliminate it?
We stated on the plan that it was to be removed.
Okay. Is that original map from 1925? I think it is. Is that is a copy of it filed with each of those Ds, generally speaking, or is it just reference?
Just read every deed that I read today. It's just reference.
But it's not filed on the land records anywhere.
Not filed on the land records, no. And it would be hard, it would be hard for us to do file a map from 1923.
Right. But you are going to file a map now.
Oh, yes, without a doubt. We're going to file a map, file a map with the lot consolidation. Oh, not, excuse me, the lot confirmation, wrong project. The lot confirmation and that will state that is not a subdivision or a re-subdivision.
And therefore, there's no finding on the developability of the lots. That's the
Yes, that'll be fine. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm not sure I read, I was reading the map correctly, but the map that I looked at seemed to show the line of the map going right across almost diagonally on the driveway. Does that have any significance to this? The declaration of the two lots and how they're defined?
But there's only one, there's only one access way over the bridge. And that is a common access. And that's where the line is that way. And then each lot, each lot conforms to all all setbacks and all bulk requirements.
Okay.
Any further questions from the commission? Any comments from the public? Any objections to this application being closed at this time? Seeing no objection, the application is hereby closed and I will put forward a resolution. This is in regard to 20 West Brother One LLC for a final subdivision to confirm two separate and distinct zoning lots existed 20 West Brother Drive in the R 20 zone. The commission finds that this is neither a subdivision nor a re-subdivision. The commission makes the following notes. Track 14 is 52,614 square feet. Track 15 is 43,593. Both appear to meet the lot frontage, lot shape and minimum lot areas for a property within the R 20. Track 15 contains an accessory structure which was reconstructed within the minimum required setbacks and was approved by variance from the Z B A in 2013. This structure is to be demolished. Track 14 is improved with a driveway and residential dwelling. Track 15 is accessed by the same driveway and the applicant has proposed plans to develop it indicating the same. Both tracks are within the sewer benefit area, but track 15 will need to establish a new connection to the town system on development. On the 12th of October, the applicant acknowledged receipt of the sewer department comments. Engineering D P W has requested that the applicant and the applicant has agreed to a 20 foot wide easement around the center line of any drainage facility ditch or stream shown on the plans and which is dedicated for drainage purposes. This easement would not be permitted to have any building structure or similar impediment installed within the easement. Future development of the properties will be subject to normal review and approval of all applicable agencies which may include but not necessarily limited to the following Building Department, Zoning Enforcement, D P W Highway and Engineering Divisions, Sewer Department, I W W A Health Department and others as may apply. Although the I W A has indicated that no permits are required for the lot confirmation. In the future, the I W W A will review this property's development. The applicant is to file a map for this for these properties, which shall include a signature block for the planning and zoning chair's signature and should include the notes requested by the Department of Public Works as well as regarding the 20 foot center line clearance of any drainage facility as well as their additional notes. And that's it. Do I have a second? Oh, any other outstanding staff and departmental comments? Do I have any a second? Mr. Lowe has seconded. Mr. Yaski, how do you vote?
Hi.
Mr. Lowe?
Hi.
Mr. Wells?
Hi.
Mr. Levy?
Hi.
And Albin is also I. And with that, the motion passes five nothing. See you later, alligator. He's coming back, right? And hello, Mr. Hasland.
Evening, Madam Chair.
Mr. Hasland is here for application number four, which is Mohammed Diallo and Veronique Mangan at 8 Deerfield Drive for a final subdivision to combine two existing lots in the R 12 zone. Go ahead, Mr. Hasland.
Yes. At the briefing yesterday, you discussed this consolidation. I think that your natural observations were all correct. I will state that currently the front lot, which runs on Deerfield is not conforming as to the green space requirements. And by merging these two lots, my clients are able to make the improvements that are shown on the site development plan and still be and then become conforming to all the green space requirements. So that's really the motivation with the consolidation of these two lots, plus the rear lot, of course, has some issues with the water course there and wetlands, et cetera. So it made good sense to the clients to do this. And S E Minor prepared all the the maps which apply. And I think that was really it. I did file the sewer letter with you, so you have that.
I don't have it. It's I just was asking Bianca. So you have filed a sewer letter? Does somebody have it? Can you guys tell me?
Yeah, we we forwarded that earlier this, earlier today. I think you had sent, you had sent that one in, hadn't you?
What's when, when did we get it?
I sent it yesterday.
And okay, and the sewer, and so you did the acknowledgement yesterday?
Yes, I did. And I copied Katie and Beth.
Yep.
Ready.
Got it.
Okay. Commission, any questions? No. I am going to turn to Henry Orfus, a member of the public who wishes to speak. Mr. Orfus, oh, I could have promoted you. Sorry, I only enabled you to speak. If you want to be on screen, I'm happy to do it. Hold on. All right, here you come. Okay, Mr. Orfus, if you would just unmute.
Thank you. I'm here to support the application that is now before you. I live next door to Mohammed Diallo and Veronique Mangan. My house abuts the second lot that is part of their, that's part of this application. Mohammed has reviewed with me his plans and I support this absolutely. And I encourage the commission to vote to approve this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Orfus. All right. Okay, so we go back. Okay, anything else from the commission? Any other comments from the public? No. Does anybody object to closing this application at this time? This application, seeing no objection, this application is therefore closed. And with that, humble chair goes at it. So in regard to the application for final subdivision to request merger of two parcels at 8 Deerfield Drive. These are, one of these lots is 12,100 square feet and the other is 12,896 square feet. The commission finds that this is neither a subdivision nor a re-subdivision and makes the following comments. The sewer department has received written acknowledgement of its own comments from the applicant on October 12th and required nothing further prior to P and Z's approval. The conservation department commented on 9/27 that it had no issue with the lot consolidation, but noted that future development would be challenging due to the existing water course, which is a stone line ditch. The Z E O commented on the 3rd of October to indicate compliance with the applicable zoning regulations. The CEO commented on the third of October to indicate compliance with the app applicable zoning regulations. IWWA issued a green sheet dated eight twenty-three, indicated no wetlands permit required for the merger. It is noted, however, that future development of the property will be subject to normal review and approval of all applicable agents which, agencies which may include, but are not necessarily limited to the following. Building Departments, Zoning Enforcement, DPW Highway and Engineering Divisions, Sewer Department, IW DOA, WA and Health, as well as any others that may apply. The following note should be placed on the subdivision map when it is filed. Upon approval of the subdivision plan, the owner agrees that the town, with the town, that unless otherwise specified hereon, the areas within at least ten feet of the centerline of any drainage facility ditch or stream shown hereon are dedicated for drainage, that no building or other structure shall be located thereon and that the town shall not be under any obligation to maintain clean enclosed or otherwise alter or improve such drainage facility. The applicant is also to provide a signature block on the subdivision map. And the applicant should address as well any other outstanding staff or departmental should, comments should they come up. And with that, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Levy has seconded, Mr. Yesky, how do you vote?
Hi.
Mr. Lowe?
Hi.
Mr. Wells?
Hi.
Mr. Levy?
Hi.
Albin is also eyeing with that the motion passes five nothing. And we go to our next application, which is to Lighthouse Lane, goodbye, Mr. Hasland.
Thank you very much.
Took so long. To Lighthouse Lane, hello, Mr. Hegney.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission.
Yes, Mr. Hegney, uh, this is to Lighthouse Lane for a final coastal site plan to demolish the existing structure, existing dwelling and construct a new dwelling pool and related amenities. On the R twelve and coastal overlay zone, Mr. Hegney kindly go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, that, that was going to be my opening remarks, but, uh, thank you for, uh, teeing that up for me. Uh, evening, everyone, Tom Hegney, uh, for the applicant. Existing house, uh, is, uh, in the AE thirteen zone with the first floor elevation of twelve point four, uh, making it non-conforming. Uh, we're, as, uh, Chair said, we're looking to demolish that, construct a house that does conform, uh, to the flood zone regulations. Uh, we meet all the criteria for setbacks, height, stories, FAR. Uh, and we have a green space of sixty-seven percent, whereas fifty-five percent is the minimum in the zone. Uh, we've had, uh, comments from engineering that can be resolved prior to the building permit. Uh, Sewer has sent their acknowledgement letter, uh, we sent that to them, no, uh, issues there that need to be resolved at this stage. Uh, the, the comments at the briefing, uh, regarded, uh, really the, uh, uh, screen, the buffer plantings along the, uh, the lawn and the seawall. Uh, I sent a, a, um, plan over to staff this afternoon that our landscape architect, uh, Wes Stout had put together. Uh, increasing the buffer areas so that there is no lawn between, uh, well, there is no lawn along the seawall, so there is a, uh, uh, buffer planting area, uh, both north and south of the pool, the one, uh, near the pool pavilion has been increased so that it's between fifteen and twenty feet wide. Uh, it's thirteen to, uh, five feet wide, north of the pool and five to ten feet wide, undulating.
Good, did staff have it so we could take a look at it, I saw the email but didn't open, uh, the plan.
I'm gonna bring it up right now.
And then, uh.
Mr. Heg.
I would, I would just, yes, sorry, I'm slow.
Um, you were talking about these, the plantings, uh, are there any plantings between the pool and the seawall?
No, no, the, the pool is, uh, adjacent, uh, right adjacent to the seawall. Um, as frankly is most of the pools in this part of town, uh, including the one that we just got approved, uh, in May, that ten Lighthouse Lane, uh, which is right up against the, uh, the seawall, it, it, it's, it's almost like the, the, uh, the walk along Newport, uh, this is a, a very substantial old seawall, uh, that, uh, exists that, uh, we do have, uh, certificate of permission from DEP, uh, to repair it. Uh, but we were gonna retain it in, in its current, uh, configuration. Uh, what we're showing on the screen here is additional plantings on the upper right-hand corner, the northeast corner of the site. Uh, and then, uh, additional plantings, uh, south of that, just north of the pool. Uh, and then, uh, plantings between the lawn area, uh, and the seawall, uh, to the south of the pool. And then, uh, uh, expanded plantings along the south.
Would you be willing to go even denser on what I believe is the south side where you're not blocking people from getting to the pool pavilion in any way and maybe expanding it some more?
Um, i- i- if, if that would please the chair so that we could have an approval tonight, I'm sure my clients would be willing to.
It would, it is so much that, that we're working very hard to comply with six one eleven, which is the coastal area management and what pleases the chair is to comply with the regulations. So, um, yeah, if it, what I would suggest that you do is that you continue to work with staff. Um, that your intent is in the, you're moving in the right direction and that we have you continue to work with staff with, um, your staff person for this. Uh, the one open item that I have on this, Mr. Hegney, is that I can't find Deep's general comments on your application, I see the permit that they issued on, on seven twenty-five to do the law work, but I don't see any comments from them in general, have you received them?
We just came in this afternoon.
Oh, okay, could somebody tell me, could, okay, so this is the problem when stuff comes in at the afternoon, okay, so it's in the email?
Yeah, I mean, that, that basically just a bit is concern about whether or not the structure is in the VE zone. Um, is that, and then we, Mr. Hegney has a, um, counter comment to that.
And, and I have, I have yet a further comment, uh, from, uh, Race from Azure D, uh, at Race. Uh, and, uh, I'll just read what she sent in response to Mr. Goucher's comment. The pool terrace and pool pavilion will be designed to have independent foundations and not be structurally connected to the dwelling such that the dwelling remains clearly in the AE zone.
Okay, hold on.
Elements will.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, okay, so let's just start with what, what Deep said, cause this, we got it at three twenty-six this afternoon. So I don't know if any, anybody else has seen it, so they are saying they reviewed the proposal. Um. Okay, and you're saying you will meet the standards of the VE zone? Is that what you're saying?
No, we- well, the, the structures that are in the VE zone will meet the VE zone standards.
Okay.
And the structures that are in the AE zone will meet the AE zone standard.
Okay, so, um, so you're gonna meet the standards of the two zones, which is their first concern, and then do they have? If structures that appear to be walls that intersect the VE zone boundary can be more accurately labeled as on grade improvements, then I don't even understand this comment, can someone explain it to me? So, okay, so, I, if, if you, you guys don't have your email open, I'm just gonna read it, it says, conversely, if structures that appear to be walls that intersect the VE zone boundary can be more accurately labeled as on grade improvements, then the proposed home and improvement subject to NFIP compliance may be consistent. Hmm, no idea what that says.
So, uh, there are two patio levels, uh, between the house uh, and the, uh, and the, the water. And those are built, and I've confirmed this with our, uh, uh, civil engineer as well as our landscape architect, those are at grade and are independent from the house. Those are in the VE zone, so need to meet the VE zone standards. The house itself is in the AE zone and obviously needs to meet those standards. Uh, and I think, uh, all that, uh, John Goucher's talking about here is, you, you have to meet the, 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 the National Flood Insurance Program requirements and.
It, it seems like he's asking you to label something. Where it says, if they can be more accurately labeled as on grade improvements.
Yeah, it, it says patio, but it, it doesn't say patio at grade. It just, on the planet, calls it a patio.
Okay, so you are saying.
I think that's what he's talking about, or terrace, excuse me, terrace.
Okay, so you, you're saying that the, that the terrace is an on-grade improvement?
Correct.
All right.
I say that. My civil engineer says it, my landscape architect says it, and my coastal engineer says it.
Okay.
And I just wanted to give the last line from, uh, Race, it says, these elements will be designed and certified by a Connecticut licensed professional engineer, further reviewed and confirmed by Race Coastal Engineers, experts in flood compliant design on the waterfront.
All right. Alrighty, okay.
And we would ask for your approval.
Madam Chair, we also just received comments from Conservation that. Welcome.
Okay, I only have the nine fifteen comments, can you tell me what they said now?
Yes, the enlarged coastal buffer area is the right step towards the better mitigation plan. The planted buffer, however, is interrupted by the proposed swimming pool and it does not maintain the recommended ten to fifteen feet on average. The proposed, proposed plan helps, but fails to establish the proper balance between the large paved terraces and biologically act, um, active green areas.
There you go, so what we said to Mr. Hegney was directionally good, what we said is good, good move, needs to go farther. And if you work with staff to broaden this, um, would that, would we be able to do that? Katie, or should we hold it open to get Mr. Hegney to file it more consistent?
I, I think if Mr. Hegney is committed to meeting at least a ten to fifteen feet and is able to work with staff, we can certainly do that, um, understanding that, you know, if, if we run into a disagreement, that we'll take it back to you, bring.
Yeah, because see, Mr. Hegney, in your, in, in, in the email you wrote us earlier today that I did read, you say that you've enlarged the buffer plantings to be fifteen to twenty foot deep by the pool pavilion. And then on the other side, they're five to thirteen, so we're gonna ask you to go fifteen feet on the, on the other side as well, on the north.
I, I shouldn't, sorry, Mr. Hegney, one more little part of it that she does say, which I think is the direction you're heading. She says, the proposed planting plan keeps a good balance between the native and ornamental plant species. A lot of effort was put into the site screening, which is I think where you're going, Mr. Hegney, but very little into the coastal buffer restoration, the buffer should be widened and more softscaping rather than hardscaping should be provided in the rear. There should be an undulating buffer between ten to fifteen feet planted with native vegetation. No lawn should be allowed along the seawall terrace except for the access points. Unlike pavement, coastal vegetation helps with stormwater management, carbon sequestration, um, supports local habitat, et cetera, so I think, I think that's where you were going, I, I was sensing with the significant buffer planting that you have.
Okay.
Uh, some, something along those lines, Katie, um. But I, I would point out that, uh, since the, the property was developed, uh, you know, something along the lines of fifty years ago, uh, there's been lawn right up to the seawall during that time. So th- this is certainly a significant improvement. We have water quality, uh, that we've included as part of this, uh, that, uh, uh, I think, uh, Conservation recognized and that, uh, uh, the Engineering Division accepted.
Yeah, but we'd still like to see you expand it consistent with the goals of the, of, of six one eleven, so if we could ask you to work with staff to get as close as we you can to fifteen feet on the, on the north side and, and retain the fifteen to twenty, are you willing to accept that language?
Yeah, yeah, the fifteen to twenty on the pool pavilion i- is not an issue, the, the small lawn area uh, that is north of the pool, uh, I'm, I'm happy to work with staff, but I, I don't wanna commit to fifteen feet because then I'm gonna have
Okay.
a buffer right up to the pool, so, uh.
Okay, and then on the, on the south area of the pool, how much would you give us more?
Well, I, I think if we were in the five to ten range, I think that that is.
That's what you have now, you've already said that, you've already added a buffer planting area, which is five to ten feet deep, so will you, will you strive to keep it ten feet?
Yeah, we can strive to keep it ten feet, yes.
Okay, and you know that you will be in trouble with staff if you don't?
Well, uh, it's, it's not being in trouble with the staff so much they worry about, it's being in trouble with the commission.
Oh, there you go, even better, I didn't think anybody was scared of us, um, okay.
Oh, you, you very much underestimate your, your abilities here.
Oh, boy.
No, sir. Yeah.
Mr. Yesky, am I going too far now?
Yeah, he is, he's going too far.
I think you went over the line.
He went over the line, I mean.
Respectful to, uh.
Yeah.
Too much.
Wait, didn't he just like totally yell at us at a previous meeting, okay, and were we?
Next, wait for his application, just wait for his next application, he'll start you high.
Okay.
I, I, I only do that when necessary.
Yes.
Why are they all necessary then?
All right, okay, all right, I don't have anything else, so you're gonna work with staff, you're gonna revise this landscaping plan, you're gonna keep, um, the plantings adjacent to the pool pavilion at the fifteen to twenty. Um, you're gonna increase the width and length of the planning to the north of the pool to try to attain fifteen feet and you're going to add a buffer planning, planting area to the south and, um, which you've already got, you're gonna add to that area and try to get it to ten feet. Across. Yeah.
Why is the hardscape right along the, the pool's edge, uh, any improvement over having lawn there? I think it was pre- stated that you had lawn.
That, that is, is there now, that, that's the seawall that we are tying the pool into, which oftentimes is a recommendation by Deep as part of anchoring the pool. Uh, we had one on Westway, where, where they wanted it right next to the seawall.
Did they, I don't, I didn't read where they recommended that here.
You say. We, we did get that as part of the certificate. We did get that as part of the certificate of permission though, that was reviewed by another, another arm of DEP, uh, not just Mr. Goucher.
Okay.
I don't see that in the certificate of permission, but I'm gonna believe you. Okay. Alrighty, okay, does the commission have any further questions? Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this application at two Lighthouse Lane? No comments from the public, does anybody from the commission object to closing this application at this time? Hearing no objection, this application is hereby closed. And therefore, we will make a motion uh, in regard to the final coastal site plan to demolish the existing dwelling and construct a new dwelling pool and pool cabana related stormwater management measures and repair the patio and seawall and install new landscaping on a twenty-six thousand twenty square foot, uh, property located at two Lighthouse Lane in the R twelve and coastal overlay zones. The subject site and proposal received street yard setback variances from the ZBA on six six twenty-two. Plan currently be, the commission notes that the plan currently being proposed does not appear to require this variance. The site otherwise appears to meet the minimum zoning requirements in the R twelve. The Sewer Division has confirmed receipt of its comments. The Engineering Division noted on the fourteenth of September that the applicant's proposed drainage designs have been reviewed and that several revisions should be addressed prior to the zoning permit issuance. The CEO noted on October three that the new pool would need to be anchored per the flood hazard overlay zone regulations. Conservation has noted in two different emails concerns over the location of the new pool and its impact on the ability to plant along the coastline. As a result, the applicant submitted a revised planting plan, which the applicant will be further amending. The plan enlarges the buffer plantings adjacent to the pool pavilion to be two fifty. The plan enlarges the buffer plantings adjacent to the pool pavilion to be two fifteen to twenty feet deep, and that shall be retained. It increases the width and length of the plantings north of the pool to five to thirteen feet deep, and the applicant will work to expand those to fifteen feet of depth consistently. The applicant has added a buffer planting area south of the pool, which ranges from five to ten feet deep, and the applicant will widen that to ten foot deep consistently. They will work with staff to achieve these results. These areas will be planted with salt tolerant grasses and shrubs. DEP issued comments with a concern about whether the applicant was meeting the requirements of the V E and A E zone. The applicant has confirmed through their engineer that these requirements are being met and that improvements, the terrace shown on the site plan is an on-grade improvement. The applicant also has received a certificate of permission on seven twenty-five to complete the file, to complete work on the existing seawall. The applicant shall address any other outstanding departmental and uh staff comments, and with that, I move approval of the application. Do I have a second? Mr. Levy has seconded. Mr. Yaski, how do you vote?
Hi.
Mr. Low.
Hi.
Mr. Wells.
Hi.
Mr. Levy.
Hi.
And Albin is also I, and with that, the application is approved five to nothing. Goodbye, Mr. Hegney.
Oh, no, I'm still here.
Oh, okay.
I'm I'm sorry. I'm I'm, I didn't mean to disappoint you, Madam Chair.
Well, it's too late.
It's too late. Okey dokey, so.
That was a long time ago, yeah.
Okay, so. Alrighty, Mr. Hegney. So we go on to the Kalinaki Company of for a preliminary subdivision to create three lots on a property at one thirty-seven Doubling Road. This is a five point six acre property. I won't read you the sizes of lots. I believe that Mr. Hegney will be doing that. If you would go ahead, Mr. Hegney. Oh, and then we have you again, don't we? Okey doke. You're with us for the long haul.
That would be John that you have next.
Oh.
But we appreciate you putting us all together like this.
Okay.
Very thoughtful.
All right, okay, so.
Good evening again, Madam Chair, members of the commission. For the record, Tom Hegney on behalf of the applicant. Uh as you indicated, uh this is a five point six acre parcel in the one acre zone. Uh, we have uh three lots that we're proposing. Uh, one of one point three acres, two of one one point two acres. And that is exclusive of the accessways, since these are all three rear lots. The uh uh there is also an open space parcel of point eight four acres uh or fifteen percent of the total area. And uh that is on the uh easterly portion of the property toward Boulder Brook Road. Uh, what we have as part of this proposal is that all three lots, although they have accessways, would use the one existing driveway of onto Doubling Road for one thirty-seven uh doubling.
And this is why you're going to the ZBA for the variance, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And uh that this uh would allow us to not develop the area where the accessways are, which has two wetland crossings, rock uh outcropping and some very steep slopes. It drops about twenty-five feet from where the house sites are, which is a pretty level area uh down to uh Boulder Brook Road. So uh we we think that this also helps in terms of dealing with uh uh protection of that area adjacent to the open space. Having walked it, uh it's it's well worth preserving uh and keeping the driveway where it is and having the rest of the houses use that. Uh, we have been in discussions uh with the neighbors adjacent to the the driveway, continue to work with them on any issues that they have uh regarding screening and and width and pavement and that kind of thing and drainage. Uh, we're also working with the neighbors uh to the north on Dingle Town Road. Uh, they have uh a drain pipe that goes through this site uh down toward Boulder Brook Road. Um, and they've experienced some difficulty. Uh, they've done fairly extensive work on their own properties uh off of Dingle Town and uh although what I did find when I was out there last week, the water is running. Uh, there appears to be a clog somewhere in this pipe uh that is preventing it from draining better. And so we'll continue to work with them uh on that issue. Uh, there were um comments that came in yesterday from Conservation.
I did not see those comments. Um, we asked about them yesterday, and we thought we had not received them.
I I didn't receive them until, you know, sometime later this afternoon, so.
This has been, the story of this meeting is all the stuff that came in at three o'clock in the afternoon. We haven't seen. I don't, let me look and see if, does anybody remember seeing them?
They came in around two thirty this afternoon, and we were, they forwarded to you.
Recommended that the western boundary of the open space be modified to follow the wall instead of being in a straight line. The wall could be used as a demarcation separating the manicure section of the property from the protected woodland. Um, the driveway filade interferes with ledge outcrop. Consider reshaping the lot lines to avoid that. The level section of the site has been disturbed while the sloping portion supports natural soils. Keep the slopes preserved in the undisturbed state and avoid the grade modification. Um, consider a conservation easement over the eastern slope, which would start from the northern end of the stone wall along this open space boundary and continue as a boundary over the ledge outcrops towards the north.
And of course, most of that area is in the open space parcel anyway, or in what I'm proposing would be uh the accessways that would not be developed. And since this is a preliminary subdivision plan, uh uh those are all issues that we will work to resolve.
Okay, so what we would ask you to do then is uh to incorporate uh and address the comments of Conservation regarding the open space and further protection of the ledge.
Yeah, I I think there are a couple of different ways that we can can work with them, uh not necessarily what they're proposing here, but uh we we would come back to you uh having resolved these issues. I want to come in with a final subdivision plan.
Okay, so um for those of you who are newer on the commission, uh we don't do preliminaries very much anymore. In the olden days, we used to do them all the time. They are non-binding. They actually don't really exist. It's in the courts. Um, and so, but what it, they give Mr. Hegney, what it would give Mr. Hegney the preliminary approval, because we didn't talk about this yesterday, is the ability to go to the ZBA and indicate that we support the subdivision. What we, what I would certainly support about the subdivision is the fact that they are going to do a single access, and that's why they're going to the ZBA. Um, so that they can not use, so they can have a solo driveway. Other things with the subdivision, we may not be crazy about, but we will have the ability to impact the subdivision when it returns to us for final. Everybody good with that? Okay.
Yeah, I understand it. I I just one question, Mr. Hegney. Uh, when you said you're uh ha- happy to work with um with staff and Conservation, etc., to resolve uh some of the issues they brought or or resolve the issues that they brought up. But then you followed up by saying, well, we may not go, I mean, essentially sound like we may not uh go along with all of them. Is that, is that?
Uh, there are some specific recommendations in the Conservation comments. Uh, I'll I'll.
You could just give me a general idea.
That that uh re- rather than reconfiguring the the lot lines uh to meet certain things, there may be another way to to reconfigure the the development on the site. Look, locate the driveway in a different place.
Yeah.
Reorient the house. It's those kinds of things.
So you would change that? Okay. All right, okay. Do I have any other comments from the commission? No. Um, with that, I'm going to turn to public comment, Mr. Hegney.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Um, Mr. Franz Vermulon. If you would kindly. I am calling on you, followed by Tome Tomaj. Okay, Mr. Vermulon, you're all set to go. Oh, you need to unmute.
There we go. How about that? All right, wonderful. Thank you for your patience. Uh, good evening, Commission. Uh, this is Franz Vermulon. We are at ninety-four Dingle Town Road. Um, just acknowledging and thanking uh Mr. Hegney for bringing up these drainage issues that have impacted the three homes here that share this driveway as indicated in our letter to the commission. I believe dated October ten. Hopefully you receive that, which details um our experiences as well as our conversations and some of our initial proposals with Mr. Hegney to resolve uh the drainage issue.
Yes, and what we would very much like you to do is, so they're going to go and get a variance so that they don't have to do separate driveways. And then they're going to come back to us for the final subdivision. And uh is to make sure you come to that meeting, because then it's final and it's set in concrete. Right now, we're only going to, if we move this forward, we would only give them a preliminary. So you should definitely come back and be here when we talk about what they're planning uh on the final and just kind of keep watching our agendas, because it's, we won't necessarily be able to reach out to you. Um, this has been a longstanding issue you've had with flooding.
Yes, and we're recent owners of this home, so we're new to the home as of January. But the previous owners, as well as my neighbor, Sharon, the shared driveway, have been.
At least they told you.
Really impacted by this, and they did not tell us. That's okay.
Or at least I hope they told you.
It's fine. We would just like to work with uh any and all to resolve it. We have otherwise no issues with anything around uh one thirty-seven Doubling.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Vermulon. And our next speaker is Tome Tomaj. Uh, Mr. Mr. Tomaj, you should be there. Uh, anytime you want to unmute, you're all set. Okay.
Okay, thanks. You hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, everybody on the commission and uh Mr. Hegney for speaking with us a couple of weeks ago. I echo what uh my neighbor Franz said. Um, we've been here a few years and we're sort of in the middle of this uh underground creek that starts on Dunwoody Place, and it goes under Dingle Town Road. And then continues underground for five or six hundred feet, and then it goes into one thirty-seven Doubling. When it rains, we get water backing up over the shared driveway, and uh when it has rained very heavily, the water has been on the road where we haven't been able to leave. Um, and so with our neighbors at Franz's house, the previous owners, we found blockages on our side of the Doubling property, on their, on their property, and they've cleared all those blockages with a camera going up and down, and everything is fine on this side. But as we've said with Mr. Hegney, once the pipe crosses one thirty-seven northeast corner, it's not connected to the pipe that's on the maps.
Oh.
Years. Um, and so all we, all we want is that pipe replaced or fixed, whatever the case may be. It may have been forgotten when they moved the house a dozen years ago over that ravine. Um, and and the drains, it keeps draining down that ravine on the east side of the property underground, and then it comes to daylight, and then it goes eastward, and it goes under Boulder Brook Road to Brook, the east, I think it's called the East Brothers Brook by Stanwich. Um, and so we're in the middle, as I said, right? So the water starts really at the golf course and then crosses Dunwoody and then keeps coming down. Um, and um it's been, it's been, it's been a really bad issue, especially nowadays that we'd get, we get more rain. And when it rains, it pours, as you know. Um, the only other concern I have is on the plan, can we ask the owners to add the pipe, because the pipe was on previous drawings. It's always been there. And it's not uh drawn on the most recent map for these three new homes. Um, and then on lot, I think it's the lot, on the right side, there's a curved stone wall there uh that's being built with with uh leach field, I believe. That looks like it's right next to. Yeah. Thank you. Um, you see sort of that curved wall there on the right side? That to me looks like it's in the ravine, in the ditch. Um, and and so it's not just the pipe that needs to drain underground. That whole area drains groundwater, too. We just don't want to block it, right? We just, as we were saying with our neighbors, we don't want anything new. Um, we just want whatever is there working and and just keep flowing so that the flooding stops. And and if you can really zoom in, you'll see um it it should say. Yeah, okay, and then scroll to the right. Thank you. Right there, in in great, right there, a little, at the top of the screen, it says six inch PVC, six inch clay. Right? That clay was the old pipe, and then it should have been replaced with PVC. Whatever the case may be, as I said, it needs to be fixed. And and I can tell you right now, six inches is not big enough, because the pipes that are on our side are the old cement pipes from fifty years ago. Those are twelve inch pipes. Um, and so a wall of water comes down when it rains. So we just, again, we just appreciate everybody looking into it and appreciate Mr. Hegney and and look forward to having uh, you know, corrections made so that the the flooding can stop and, you know, uh us be able to get in and out of our homes.
Okay, I think the best way to address this, Mr. Tomaj, is not to specify that they should do X and connect, but leave it as you said uh is to ameliorate the existing si- situation, that the new drainage plan will seek to address these conditions that have been long existing and to ameliorate them. Uh, and which Mr. Hegney has apparently, his client has apparently offered to do. Uh, normally, we would only require that the impact on adjacent properties not increase. But that is, it seems that the they have agreed to do more than that and to ameliorate the existing flooding to the extent possible. Uh, we do sometimes find that there's flooding that can't be addressed. We have a pond in a neighborhood that flooded during IDA and it, there's just no way. It turns out that there's very little that can be done to ameliorate that, but hopefully he's got good engineers on it, and he will be able to find something. So if that works for you.
Yeah, yeah, we're no experts, by the way. Uh, we don't know.
Well, you know some, because I think you know a fair amount about construction. I looked you up after you wrote us, because I didn't recognize your name, and a lot of times I recognize residents' names nowadays. So I looked you up, and I was very interested, because um he works on the financing of of modular homes as well as, do you work at all, you're not gonna, you, the commission's going to know why I'm asking you this. Do you work at all on tiny houses?
We do. Um, so we own um retirement communities, which are manufactured housing communities, also known as mobile home parks. Um, and uh are also RV communities, and those tiny homes are what we call park models. Um, and so they're uh they're in huge demand for retirees, especially people who like to be snowbirds.
So I'm sorry, Mr. Hegney, I'm eating some of your time up with this, but um so, Mr. Tomaj, here's what we're going to ask you. Katie has your email address. The Connecticut Building Code is about to change regarding tiny houses.
Hmm.
And we, as a result, are going to freeze one or proposing to freeze one of our regulations, because we want to see what the impact is and how to write our regulations. So if you had a little bit of time and you were willing to work with the Planning and Zoning Commission as a resource, we'd love to have Katie tap your knowledge about, because what we're talking about is accessory buildings on existing properties.
Right.
And we'd love to tap your knowledge, because we don't know that much about this area. When I saw it, I thought it was just weird serendipity that I looked you up. Uh, just one of those wild whims, whenever you wrote at eleven o'clock on Sunday night or something. So who is this guy? So um Katie has your email. We'd love uh to just reach out to you and ask you about how we should conceptualize. how we should conceptualize that because we allow people in all residential zones to add an accessory building, residential building, and we just want to think about how we write that rule in the future. So we're going to freeze it till we study the building code.
I'm happy.
We hope to freeze it. I don't know that the Commission's going to agree with the proposal.
Sure. I'm happy to help. I love helping the town when I can, so we appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, alrighty. So, Mr. Hagney, you're going to continue to work on that and we're just going to ask you to keep doing that.
We, we will work with all our respective neighbors on the issues that they have. And we would ask that you give us a proceed to final on this, since it's not a vote to approve, but a vote to proceed to final, which, as you said, Madam Chair, is what we used to do when we had preliminaries all the time, but.
I don't remember the last time we did one.
In a while.
It's been about a year. Go ahead, Katie.
I might also suggest that since it's three lots, that, that part of the final application include a construction phasing, if you will. This particular developer I know has done three lots all at one time in the past. And unfortunately, when he opened the lots, there was a hurricane came. And so I know he knows all too well about how that can go wrong. So I think the kind of, the kind of measures he had in place on that North Street application would be appropriate here. And unless he's planning to do one at a time, but either way, I think the detailed construction phasing would be important.
Just a question, Katie, this isn't the site plan yet, so wouldn't we ask for that on the site plan?
I think we should do it as part of the subdivision because
Okay.
they may come in with the site plan next week or it might be years from now. I mean, they may sell this and then another developer will come along. So I think it should be, I think it should be noted. You know, at least referenced on the subdivision play, depending on what it is they come through with, but usually what happens is as part of the requirement to show that these lots are developable, there is something in the record showing that the construction phasing of it is, is, can be done in such a way that it doesn't create havoc in the neighborhood.
Well, indeed, conservation has asked to exclude slopes from the construction envelope. And that might have an impact if you're trying, if they're trying to do everything at once, right?
Yeah. Good. Alrighty, any further comments from the Commission? Nope. And we have no further comments from the public. Does anyone object to closing this application at this time?
Nope.
Hearing no objection, the application is hereby closed. In regard to the, to this application of the Kali Nagi Company for a preliminary subdivision to create three lots from a 5.6 acre property on 137 Dublin Road in the RA1 Zone. The Commission makes the following findings and notes. First, it notes that a lot line revision did go before the Commission in 2006 to transfer some land from 1.645, 648 acres from 137 Dublin to 16 Boulder Brook and some land back from Boulder Brook to 137 Dublin. But as now proposed, all three single-family development parcels will be rear lots within the RA1 Zone. The application materials show each lot fitting 150 foot diameter circle as is required to confirm to the lot shape required for the RA1 Zone. The applicant has received an IWWA green sheet sign off dated 9/2, indicating that no permit is required at this time. Future lot development will however, require review by IWWA. The Health Department commented on 9/21 and indicated some concern regarding the accommodation of a septic system on 133 Dublin. The CEO comment, commented on 10/7 noting that the applicant has applied for a variance to allow for the driveways to be outside of the accessways. The driveway to be outside of the accessways. The applicant has proposed an open space parcel to be 15% of the total lot area, 36,000 square feet, 36,636 square feet in size, which appears to meet the requirements for the open space per Section 6297 of the Town of Greenwich subdivision regulations. However, the Conservation Department has issued comments regarding the open space, which the applicant shall be addressing prior to returning for a final subdivision and will work to incorporate them. The key issues in these comments are further protection of the ledges are primarily further protection of the ledges. The applicant will have to return to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a final subdivision approval and submit construction architectural plans at that time. They will also be required to provide a phasing plan for the development. The Commission reserves and makes clear that it will be providing further input on the open space set aside at the time of the final subdivision application. It is noted also that the future development of the property will be subject to normal review and approval of all applicable agencies. The applicant is currently developing drainage and septic plan packages to submit. The drainage design will include a combination of previous pavements and subsurface recharges. And this has been requested and is requested by the Commission to maximize low-impact development techniques. It shall further seek to ameliorate all the previous, the currently existing flooding conditions on this site. I therefore hereby move this subdivision to proceed to final. Subject to any outstanding staff or departmental requests, comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm going to give it to Wells, I think. Mr. Yeski, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Low?
Aye.
Mr. Wells?
Aye.
Mr. Levy?
Aye.
Albin is also aye and with that, the application passes 5-0. You got your job to do, Mr. Hagney.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
Bye-bye.
Thank you all. Bye.
And with that, we move on once again to 18 Armstrong Lane LLC for a final coastal subdivision to create two lots at 18 Armstrong Lane. And I'm only saying that one, hello, Mr. Hagney, at this time. You sent us an email today, which I didn't really understand about the court precedent that
Sure.
meant we did not have to separate these applications when we heard them, that we could hear them all together. However, I see no disadvantage and some advantage to you in us keeping them separate since that has caused concern and objection from, from opposing neighbors. Would you comment on that?
I, I would love to, Madam Chair. For the record, John Hagney, for the applicants. Oh, you know, that's why we, we show up here. We want to make comments. Madam Chair, we'd prefer that these applications be taken together. If you recall, the Planning and Zoning Commission did approve this property for subdivision back in 2020. The problem that the courts had with that approval was that our subdivision was not approved at the same time as our coastal site plans. By having all the applications heard together, we believe we solved that problem. And evaluating the coastal site plan considerations as part of our subdivision.
Okay.
I would say that i-if, if the, if their neighbors are objecting to that, I, I think that they need to show how that process prejudices them in order to prevent us from doing so.
Mr. Hagney, was there an actual ruling from the court on that or was that just part of discussions because one wanted to have it one way, another wanted to have it another way, or is, in other words, what's the precedent level of what you're stating? I mean, it was, it, it sounds like it was just part of the discussion.
So the precedent for the Planning and Zoning Commission to hear the applications, however they choose, is, is Connecticut state law. And we have a case citing from Murak v. Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of New London. It's a citation 196 con, 192, it's from 1985, the Connecticut Supreme Court.
Which effectively says the Commission can do which way they want, or?
I, it says that they can, that there's a strong presumption of regularity in how municipal land use agencies process applications like this. You know, from a practical standpoint, the state statutes provide us with an overall framework, which is then specified further by each of the 170 some odd towns that we have in. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. 169 towns we have in State, Connecticut. But even then, you can't be so specific to handle every situation. So there's deference to the towns on how they process these things. And I think this would fall in an area where, I'm sorry, Katie.
I apologize. So, so basically what, what, specific to your applications, there's no case law per se. This is just part of the discussion that was had during the settlement talks or whatever it was that was happening on the talks after the first application.
This is a playbook that was provided to us by Ted O'Hanlon at Robinson &amp; Cole when we first did the appeal of the 2020 approval. And so we
I would just note that that was, Mr. O'Hanlon has made that argument, not when he was a judge, when he was an attorney.
Very correct.
Yes, but he's made that argument on other applications before the Commission and the Commission's actions have been upheld. So I, I, I'm, this is, I find this to be quite an important topic, actually, as it relates to coastal applications, which is why I'm pressing you, pressing you on this. Because Mr. O'Hanlon has made that comment on, as I said, previous applications where he's argued that they have to be combined and I don't think that's true because A, one's a planning function, the subdivision, and one's a zoning function, the site plan.
I, I, I think if you wanted to follow that a line of thinking, I think there's also countless case laws, examples of especially the Poirier vein of cases where towns first do subdivisions and then do the development of lots as subsequent time. The Poirier cases state that when a subdivision is approved, the zoning that takes place afterwards occurs under the rules that were in place at the time the subdivision was approved. So it presupposes that you're doing subdivisions first and then you're doing your zoning and your development later. So I, Katie, I think you're absolutely right. I think that's the way that the town has processed subdivision applications for over 70 years. I think that's the way that's done in the majority of the state. That the difficulty that we're having here and to avoid the conflict of trying to resolve that issue are the provisions in the Coastal Management Act. And we can take that issue off the table by filing the applications all at the same time and addressing them all at once.
Thank you.
But I, I, I think you're absolutely right and I think the town should continue to process subdivision applications that way. You know, this, uh, uh, application has reminded me of the first two lot subdivision that I, I did when I first started working for my father. And the planners had a little bit of fun with me. They told me that I need to go.
Hold on a second.
There is a moral to the story, Madam Chair.
No, no, but before you do that, do we have all three applications open right now or not?
If we, if we could, I'd appreciate that.
Let's, let's do process first before we do the memory lane thing.
Of course.
All right, so.
Well, then I can't wait to hear where this is going.
I guess I know I was like.
I'm not, I'm not going to name names. Planner that had some fun with me.
The 18 Armstrong Lane application for the subdivision has been opened already. In addition, we will be hearing 18 Armstrong Lane LLC for the final coastal site plan for what is known as parcel XR. And another final coastal site plan for what is known as parcel YR, also at 18 Armstrong Lane. And with that, Mr. Hagney, you may proceed with memory lane.
Absolutely, Madam Chair. So my first two lot subdivision that we did in town, working for my father, the planners told me that I needed to get a letter from a traffic engineer evaluating the impact of adding a lot to a neighborhood. I was obviously very interested in getting that documentation in order to have a complete file. We reached out to a traffic engineer who we had been working with, a regular frequent flyer that you'd see all the time, and he laughed. And I, and once he realized that I wasn't kidding, he said, kid, you've been led astray. A traffic engineer isn't going to evaluate a, a single addition of a home to a neighborhood because there's a relatively insignificant impact. And now anyone who has done subdivisions like this before would know that, which is why you see it all over the place. You know, you see it when DPW says, we're not going to impose road standards on a private driveway unless there are five homes on it. You know, you need to have a significant number of things. It's why before the 1990s, municipalities didn't even review these things. They were performed as free cuts. And that, you know, you would talk to your surveyor and say, I want two lots here. They'd say, do you have enough land? Do you have enough frontage? Great. Let's record a map on the Mylar and now you have two lots. It's why when you look at the state statutes, the state statutes only define us, define a subdivision as the subdivision of three parcels. Sorry. The Office of Early Childhood tells me I need to be more demonstrative to help my child learn.
Okay, we're going to call up your child's grant. Yeah, okay, just move on.
I'll stop right there, but why, why I want to tell you, Madam Chair, is that the addition of a single lot to this neighborhood is not going to have any significant impact on the surrounding properties. So it really makes me wonder, well, what is everyone's concern here? Is it engineering and drainage? We've had Public Works look at this time and time again. They've issued over eight memos saying that the development on this property and the subdivision of these lots complies with the Town Drainage Manual. I would say that we got an email from our town engineer, Juan Paredes, today. Not only reconfirming that the subdivision meets the drainage standards, but further noting that the property does not directly discharge to sensitive coastal receiving waters and wetlands. So even with the coastal considerations that are being reviewed by your commission as part of this coastal subdivision, engineering says that there should be no issue here. And that's on top of the, the expert opinions that we have from Tony DeAndrea and Matt Pop, who are both in the audience here this evening. Both of them wrote letters which we submitted earlier today. I know it was a popular day to submit things late, but I would like to remind the Commission that back when we all used to meet in person, there are lots of times where we submitted physical documents and, and plans to you at the hearing. So I think that as long as we came in a little earlier, we're doing better than we used to.
Come on.
That's unacceptable.
It's okay because you used to do it in person, right? Sticking in our desk is, is, it was, you did it by mail today and that's better.
Mr. Yessi, I would say we're, we're a little earlier this go around, but I would say it was legal then and it's legal now.
You're not, you're not listening to what the Commission's been talking about for some time, which is to receive this stuff at the 11th hour, however you define 11th hour, is just completely unacceptable. Totally unacceptable. It, it doesn't allow us time to prepare.
Mr. Low, I can appreciate that. What we did was we wanted to make sure we had a complete record. But I think that the information that the Commission has received previously today is sufficient for you guys to make your decision here. To note that we have a subdivision and two coastal site plans that comply with the state standards, with the town's regulations, and it merits your approval. So I would tell you, regardless of whether or not you got a chance to read our submission today, I think that you have the information that you need in order to make a decision.
So, Mr. Hagney, I understand that there you sent another letter. No, anything that came after 2 o'clock this afternoon. It was too late, so would you just kindly summarize the contents and not lecture us on what we should or should not be doing?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. The letter included a memo from Tony DeAndrea's office noting that the engineering concerns raised by the neighbors' engineer are not substantial, that we comply with the, the drainage manual standards. Again, the legal standard that we're being held to is the Town Drainage Manual as interpreted by the town engineer, which we do have their sign off. And further included an exhibit. And Bianca, if I could ask you to, to bring that up, I'd like to take you through that.
You want the letter or the map that you submitted?
If we could, if we could look at the sketch A, I, I think it, you know, a picture says a thousand words. And when we're talking about whether the development of 18 Armstrong Lane can have an appreciable or, as Matt Pop pointed out, a significant adverse impact on coastal resources. This is the route runoff has to take from 18 Armstrong Lane down to the closest coastal resource, which is Twin Lakes Pond. And as Mr. DeAndrea points out in his letter, we're going to run over 20 feet of grass on the shoulder between the property and Longview Avenue. We're going to run over 20 feet of grass on the shoulder between the property and Longview Avenue. Before we go up on this plan along, uh, 140 feet, along, 145 feet along the gravel ditch, along the edge of Longview Avenue. Uh, before we take a left on Gilliam Lane here and travel 455 feet along the asphalt curb. Into a, a, a drain pipe that will take us the remaining 530 feet. Uh, down Twin Lakes Lane to get to Twin Lakes Pond. That is an extremely long way for runoff to go. To have a significant adverse impact on Twin Lakes Pond. And mind you, both our engineers and the town engineers have agreed. That no more runoff will be coming in this direction than already exists. So that the subdivision and the coastal site plans are not changing. Or not exacerbating existing conditions. So, uh, I, I do think that it, you know, we've, we've been talking about, you know, you're in the coastal zone, you're in the coastal zone. Uh, we are within a thousand feet of Twin Lakes Pond. But this runoff would need to travel 1,100, uh, plus feet. In order to get to a coastal resource. And, and that's just, uh, a, a lot, and I, I, I think that the commission can find that. Uh, a significant impact or a significant adverse impact is extremely unlikely on Twin Lakes Pond. Matt Pop did put together a letter for us as well. Emphasizing, uh, or outlining all of the adverse impacts that are evaluated underneath, uh, the Coastal Management Act. Again, none of those, uh, considerations are going to be impacted by this project. Uh, we are not on the water, uh, we will not be, uh, affecting, uh, the, the resources that the state statutes seek to protect. Madam Chair, I think you said it best yourself at, at the briefing yesterday. This is a project that had, that meets all the legal requirements for subdivision. Uh, if our, our neighbors have additional concerns.
Didn't actually say that. I said that, I said it a little differently. I said, we have not been given any indication that it does not. Was very careful about how I worded that, because if I had said the other thing, I would have been predetermining, and you know that's illegal.
I, I, I do know that.
But thank you, Mr. Hegney for that.
I, 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 I was listening at the briefing, but I guess I wasn't listening closely enough.
Yeah, you've just gotta be aware that the commission doesn't predetermine if it can help, it can avoid it. Now, we are human and we say dumb things, but, okay. You, you, um, the, what you have submitted to us is the additional comment. Again, not having seen it everything. I just asked Bianca, what time did we get the newest set of the cons, of the comments from DPW?
The email clarification from Juan.
Yep. I checked my email at like 2:30. And then stopped. Did anybody see it? Has anybody read it?
Came in just before that, Madam Chair.
Well, okay, so maybe it was 2:25.
It came in at 2:25.
There you go.
And was forwarded to you.
Okay. 2:28? Nope, that's not that one. All right, um, what did they say, Bianca? Cause I'm not seeing it. Um, unless, what time did you send it? Maybe that'll.
We got it at 2:37, Madam Chair, 2:37.
So see, that's why we didn't see it. Okay, so people have it in front of them. This is the question we raised yesterday. Because, um, remember I was talking about the le, the Robinson Cole letter and how the soils had changed. And without an explanation, and we said to Bianca, would you once again go back to DPW? And would you confirm that this is still okay? So I've now located it. Okay, so.
Would you like me to read it?
Yes, please.
Um, Juan Perez's email, uh, 2:25 this afternoon. I submit for your consideration the following. The engineering division has reviewed and approved the subdivision as it meets a town of Greenwich stain, town of Greenwich drainage standards. The engineering division does not typically question the soil texture description provided by the engineer of record. The commission, at their discretion, may request further certification by the engineer of record of the receiving soils. Prior to the installation of BMPs, scarification of the receiving soils is a requirement of the design approval. The engineer of record revised and revised the description and certified it accordingly. The results of the saturated hydraulic conductivity test, 11.3 inches per hour remain the same. The SCHT, SHCT was done at the required elevation at or below the minimum. At or below the bottom of the BMP, and the results are acceptable for infiltration BMPs. The property is located in the cam zone, though it is not waterfront and not directly discharged to sensitive coastal receiving waters and wetlands. Applicant has represented the site as not affecting downstream resources within the town of Greenwich. Referred to as critical areas in the drainage manual. Based on figure five, five dash two, page 86 of the drainage manual, engineering division staff concurs. The treatment trained for such developments in critical areas is not applicable to the subdivision.
Okay. Could you, would you mind rescinding me then? Cause I'm not finding. Okay, so, um, that's what we asked yesterday. We wanted to know if there was any comment. Deep is from the beginning issued, um, that the, the property is within 900 feet of the Long Island Sound. Um, that they have no, uh, comment on the subdivision. Conservation has made comments regarding the open space, but, um. Has not made any comments regarding any impact on coastal resources. And, uh, the only other thing I don't know is, did you ever get the sewer? Signature acknowledgement of the sewer letter, Mr. Hegney.
Madam Chair, uh, I believe my client is in the audience this evening.
All right, well, I, my records, my notes for tonight show that you have not signed the acknowledgement of sewer yet.
Uh, we are happy to provide that. I would ask that, uh, uh, Nick, if you're listening and can send that over.
Not our Nick, but your Nick.
Uh, I, I did see Mr. McRy was absent this evening, but we, we have our own Nick, so I'm hoping that, uh.
All right, so you're gonna need to confirm that. If you could try to confirm that as we talk about these applications. It would be helpful because my notes have that that is still missing. Bianca, I don't know if you have anything on that. You have us as a must decide tonight, uh, Mr. Hegney. I'm, um, Katie, if we were to not decide this and. Oh, we can't because it's in the regular agenda. Okay, all right, so, um, we will figure this out as we go. So if somebody could work that out. Bianca, it's yours, so maybe, I think I asked you yesterday and you also said you had not seen it. Um, and you know, we've been holding people to that. With that, does the commission have any questions or comments? Alrighty, Mr. DeAndrea has his hand up, Mr. Hegney. He's working with you, so I suppose he wants to speak.
I'm always interested to hear what Mr. DeAndrea has to say.
Okay. Oh, he just went away. There he is, now he's back. All right, um, here goes Mr. DeAndrea. All right. Oh, thank you, Bianca. All right, Mr. DeAndrea, if you can unmute, um, please go ahead.
Thank you. All right, now, what happens every once in a while, they drop me off, I have to come back in. Now I think we're good. So I wanted to add to what Mr. Hegney said about the drainage. And keeping in mind that there is a portion of the system that is piped to the pond. The pond has an aerator. It's a, um, tidal pond, somewhat manmade and impounded. So there's another aspect of that. The total length of distance that the, the drainage flows is over 1,100 feet. Um, there is no issue at the pond. It's not full of algae. It's well, um, uh, aerated. So those are all good things. The thing that, uh, Mr. Berides did, as I, um, um, assess it. Is that as his consultant to the commission, he's told you over and over that there is nothing wrong with this design. And involve, in, in, in regard to the soil testing. After you dig the test holes and you make a visual and tactile assessment of the type of soil. The manual requires that we do the saturated hydraulic conductivity test, which is really proof. That the soils have the permeability required by our good engineering principles and the town engineering design manual. That the soils will percolate and infiltrate the soil, uh, the, the effluent, the water that's directed to the, uh, BMPs. The BMPs being either galleries, um, or, um, rain gardens, things like that. In this case, we're using the galleries and the permeable pavers to accommodate our treatment. And I think that's the most important. In regard to the sewer, both of these lots are new. They will require permits for new connu, uh, construction and new connection. Um, the demolition of the house will require a permit for demolition. At that time, typically the requirement is to cap the existing lateral at the main. Unless it's deemed appropriate to reuse it. So it's not the same thing as other applications where we want to reuse a lateral and there may be problems with it. This is a brand new installation and we have absolutely no reason to believe that we will not be granted a permit to connect to the existing main. I think that's really all I have to say at this time, uh, but we are in total compliance with all.
If you weren't granted a permit to connect to the existing main, your development plan would be moot. And I mean, that's just that, that the commission, the commission approves or doesn't, and then sewer makes the ultimate decision. Go ahead, Mr. DeAndrea.
But all of your, all of your conditions are that you approve this subject to all those other department comments and requirements. So, okay, so in this case, um, there is no reason to expect or suspect. And there's been no comments made to the contrary, that this would not be granted a permit to connect to the sewer. As long as it's done in accordance with the town standards for sewer construction. And again, that's why we have a permit review process for sewer permits.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. Alrighty. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this application at this time? I assume you don't mind, Mr. Hegney, that we will move on to the public, and here is Mr. Hoiler. It's amazing, by the way, we're all still here. I don't know what it's like where the rest of you are, but it's making many flashing lights here. Well, it's probably nice where Katie is, but.
We're talking about the weather, right?
Yes.
I hope I didn't break anything on the screens. That's, that's good.
Yes, hello, Mr. Hoiler. Okay, now, you sent another letter today.
I, I did. It was in, it was in response to.
So you know, I for one have not read it, so you will need to recap that. I don't know if the rest of the commission has had an opportunity. Uh, we tend not to get to the things that we receive late in the day. So if you would recap whatever you said that was important there, and, uh, I think we'll have some questions for you.
Of course, um, just for the record, Ryan Hoiler, Robinson and Cole, on behalf of Kimberly and Ian, uh, Ian, uh, Tribek. And Albert and Kate Leverge. You have all my arguments in writing, including the letter I submitted this afternoon. However, because I submitted it this afternoon, I will go over that briefly. Just to start, however, um, I do still object to the combined hearing of the two. Um, I still think there's some confusion regarding the difference between site plans and coastal site plan reviews. Um, the coastal site plan review is done under 22A105. And is the subdivision application itself and the things combined with it. It is not the separate site plan applications that are before the commission. Um, but nonetheless, moving on, um. The applicant should not have waited to the 11th hour to submit the new materials, um, which according to the applicant were submitted to amend its applications. Um, the commission must deny the applications this evening as a result of this late submission. Um, more than two months after submitting the subdivision application, the amended package materials now include a report from an environmental consultant. Uh, this should have been submitted months ago. Um, by submitting this morning, the application, the applicant has demonstrated that the subdivision application was incomplete as it was originally filed. Um, and, and should be withdrawn and resubmitted. If not, it should be denied. Um, if the application, if the commission does not deny, it has no choice but to continue this matter yet again because of the applicant's late submittal. Uh, fundamental fairness is a right guaranteed in administrative proceedings. And it means that no one at the hearing may to be deprived of the right to cross-examine witnesses. And they must have the opportunity to know the facts on which the commission is asked to act and to offer rebuttal evidence. If the commission acts on these applications this evening, my clients and all members of the public will have been denied their right to a fundamentally fair proceeding. Cause they did not have time to adequately review and respond to the new evidence. Um, to be clear, the applicant created this problem by submitting this late package when they could have submitted it weeks ago. As to the substance of the application itself, all of our prior objections still stand. Um, we have been unable to thoroughly review the evidence submitted today. But we still see no indication that the in, the applicant has filed information sufficient to meet the standards required under the Coastal Area Management Act. There are still concerns regarding the credibility of the engineering information provided by the applicant. As explained, uh, by our engineering expert in our letter dated September 29th. Um, our engineering expert who will speak shortly still has questions this evening as to, um, the credibility of the engineering app, information. It was noted that while the DPW has approved this and commented on it. They are relying on the applicant's attestations, as noted in the DPW's email of this afternoon. Uh, if there are still credibility questions regarding the engineering, then there's no way that DPW could have possibly approved this. Because they're relying on the applicant's attestations. Um, you've seen the pictures in the September 19th letter we submitted. It shows how much flooding affects the area and the increased impervious surface area will only exacerbate that existing problem. The map shown by Mr. Hegney earlier, that's great, but it's all downhill from this subdivided property directly to that tidal. And that is where the increased flow will go. While Mr. DeAndrea noted that there are no issues with the pond, there are no issues with the pond now. We don't know what's going to happen after this subdivision is completed and the site plans are approved. And this significant increase in impervious payment goes in. We still stand by our complaint regarding the size of the open space and the use of the level spreader within the open space. Which echo comments from the conservation commission. We note that, as the commission has noted tonight, that the applicant has not yet submitted their sewer letter. And finally, the small size, the proposed lots as compared to the materially larger surrounding lots. Will create two properties that are out of proportion and do not fit with the rest of the neighborhood. Um, so with all that said, I'd like to now turn it over to Mr. Stephen Trinkus, if I can, who will go into some detailed engineering comments.
Okay, Mr. Trinkus, would you please raise your hand? And if you would unmute, you're ready to go.
Okay, um, good evening, members of the, uh, commission. My name is Steve Trinkus. I'm a licensed professional engineer in South Hurry, Connecticut. Um, I did not see the applicant's submittal till after 3:30 today, as I spent all day, um, out in the field digging test holes in Danbury. So I had very limited, uh, time to look at the information. Uh, really only one issue to comment on. In the applicant's response submitted today, they talk of an infiltration rate of 1.88 inches per hour. That equates to 45 feet plus per day, uh, for, uh, the claim of silt soil. However, in the original application, the infiltration rate, and this is what is cited in Juan Perez's, uh, email from 2:30 or so today. Was 11.3 inches per hour. So we have 1.88, the applicant is citing today. And yet Juan has a rate of 11.3, which is over 270 feet per day. Both of these infiltration rates are more common for sand and gravel, not for silt soil. I have done, uh, many infiltration tests for, uh, lid practices, is, that's my area of expertise. And I looked up, uh, several different states, Pennsylvania, Minnesota, and California, so pretty much. pretty much across the country. And infiltration rates in their state manuals range from, for a silt soil, from point two to point four inches per hour. That's a far cry from one point eight eight inches per hour. Silt soils are less than point five inches per hour. That's been my experience in many sites. And you know, to come up with something that's forty-five feet per day is an extremely well-drained soil, which silt is not. I also, you know, really do take as a professional engineer, great exception to changing the soil data. You know, that tells me, well, did the person logging it in the first place not know what they're doing? But it raises questions to quite honestly, all of the engineering information on the plan set. If they had gone out and dug a separate test pit and had a new test hole, a new log, that would be a different story. But this was the same test bit number, same description of depth, and yet it went from dark gray clay to gray silt. That is, to me professionally, a really big problem. But the bottom line is silt soils aren't going to have almost two inch per hour infiltration rate. While your DPW has reviewed the information, I agree with Attorney Hoyer that they're basically kind of, in a way, I hate to say it, blindly accepting the applicant's data. I've done reviews from municipalities and for third-party groups on projects. And, you know, given the opportunity to walk the site and sometimes investigate the soil, we do confirm or deny what the soil data the applicant has submitted. Compliance with your manual doesn't necessarily equate to actually working in the field, and that is the way I look at this plan. Is this going to actually work in the field as represented by the applicant? And based on forty years of experience and my expertise in lid, the short answer is no, it will not work. The water is not going to infiltrate on this site from the call tech systems or from the gravel layers under the permeable pavers. And you're going to have increases runoff volume that is going to cause additional flooding on the down gradient road. And that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
So, Mr. Trinkus, a couple of things, if you would kindly put all these comments into writing and submit them.
I'd be happy to do that in email.
Okay, whatever you want to do for those comments and try not to send them to us also at four o'clock. The other thing is I take exception to a couple of the things you said. We can't ask applicants to do something other than comply with our regulations and our manuals and our rules. We can't just unanimously say, oh, well, we don't think this works. We, we, and especially because our municipality does not blindly follow or blindly agree to what it is being advised by engineers. I've been working with them for a while now, and I have a great deal of respect for our Department of Public Works. Now that said, I would like to see your comments in writing and read all the material that has been sent in to us at such a late hour. So thank you. Mr. Hoiler, back over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe that both my clients, Ian Tribick and Albert Leverge are on tonight because of last time when I mentioned that I had no further comments and then one of them decided to speak. I will not speak for them tonight. So if either of them would like to, to jump in, I think now is probably the best time if that works for the commission.
So would Mr. Hoiler's comments, clients like to speak at this time?
Okay, so it sounds like they're not going to.
Good. All right. They texted you good.
So in that.
It's the great advantage of Zoom meetings. You can be running another computer.
Absolutely.
All right. Okay. So you're done, Mr. Hoiler?
Yes, you've heard all my comments and you have everything in writing. And as mentioned, we will follow up with a further writing with Mr. Trinkus's comments based on what we received today later. And you will not receive it at four P M.
Thank you. All right. So with that, Mr. Hegney.
Madam Chair, I, I do want to warn the commission. I worry that some of the issues being raised by Mr. Trinkus is mistaking the forest for the trees.
Now, Mr. Hegney, you would not be appropriate in making that comment that you don't think the commission has grown up enough to determine for itself whether issues are valid or not, and I would not pursue that line with us. The next comment is that I would like to make to you, however, is this, you have, this is a must close tonight, all of these applications. I would like to ask that you give us an extension to our next meeting if Katie and Bianca agree to us being able to accommodate it at ten twenty-five. And the reason is, in your best interest as well as the commission's, we have, we received a great deal of material late in the day today. I don't think it's appropriate for us to wing it and say that we have a good enough understanding of it. I'd like to read everything. I have printed the DPW comments. I'm comfortable with that, but I would like to read your letter. I would like to read Mr. Hoiler's reply. And I would like to go back and review these. I would like to receive, and hopefully Mr. Trinkus will send his email right away. But I would like the commission to have a couple of weeks to get an opportunity to review this material that we've received because we have not. And you're just going to end up back where you are now if the commission doesn't thoroughly do its job. So if you guys don't object to my asking to keep it open, normally we agree to that. So Katie, can we do ten twenty-five? I think it's ten twenty-five. I get all mixed up with the Thursday meetings.
Twenty-five. The only, you know, the, yes, we can do that.
Yeah, which means she was, she was going to say there's something really big and we're going to be up till midnight, but we're trying to get out. We're trying to have not a bad night tonight, so we'll see.
I tell you that to get you to the meeting. It's once you're there that.
All right.
But no, I was worried about the legal notice, but there, it's because it's not a public hearing, so it's fine.
But so it's not a public hearing, and that would give us time to carry out our job responsibilities so that we have effectively, the main issue before us is this issue of the impact on coastal resources when we make that determination, that it be fully, a fully informed one. Okay, so Mr. Hegney, did you not say yes?
Madam Chair, I'm hoping to hear from my clients again who are in the audience this evening. But if the commission would like more time, I would recommend and advise them to give that to you.
Okay, great. So you're going to give us an extension. You want to tell them that I think we only need it to the next meeting. If we had had another day, it would have been good. I just don't want to. All right. Okay. So thank you very much for that.
No problem. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the commission.
All right, you know, Bianca, what would probably help us on that application, as you might have gathered, is if we can put everything that we've gotten today, just put it into the OneDrive for that application so that all the documents for that application are together in the OneDrive so that in the next few days, we can at our leisure review them.
Yeah, I typically do upload all the entire file.
I just, there's just a couple of questions and Mr. Wells, in my discussion with Mr. McRae, but is being absent, he would like you to remain seated. Okay, and with that, we go on to the, the next application. And Mr. O'Donnell, would you like to combine these items or hear them separately?
Madam Chair, may we combine these items?
Yes, sir. So, Mr. Bazili, we are now opening the public hearing. And we go to applications eleven and twelve. La France Development LLC and fifty La France LLC. The first thing is for a proposed lot line revision between two existing parcels. And the second one is for a final site plan and special permit to construct a single-family home at sixty La France Road. The first one is for fifty-two and sixty La France Road. And with that, Mr. O'Donnell, if you would begin, I think you know the issues that were troubling us yesterday and that we were confused about. So if you want to jump in, please feel free.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, members of the commission, on behalf of the applicant Casey O'Donnell for La France Development LLC and fifty La France LLC. I did observe the briefing and I will be brief as best I can. I did want to acknowledge how grateful I am to the Planning and Zoning Commission's administrative staff. Madeline and Sherry are always smiling and always working to the last minute and getting us what we need so we can get you the answers that you asked. So thank you very much to Madeline and Sherry.
I hope you send, send them an email and thank them. I hope you will do that.
I will do that. Taken under advisement, Madam Chair.
Because we, we may forget to say to them, somebody bragged about you at the meeting. So if you would do that, it would be great.
I will.
Okay, go ahead.
I can go through in a little detail, but that usually is not what you're looking for. So if you'd like more detail, please raise a hand or.
Wildly confused about a couple of things. I think you heard us say it yesterday.
Yes.
A bit confused, a future re-subdivision of lot two has to preserve, has to keep the common drive and rock outcroppings. Now, okay. So this comes up and tell us how it impacts this development and what you're proposing to do.
So brief history, and if you want more, I'll give you more. But I reviewed the subdivision nine, the prelim subdivision, as we discussed this evening, and the operative subdivision nine two one in nineteen eighty-three. And the, I also looked at every intervening lot line and the inland wetlands applications as it related to that original subdivision application. The totality of the record is, is that traffic in inland wetlands both supported a reduced number of curb cuts that the commission approved a three-lot subdivision that included one driveway per lot, so three lots, three driveways, and that they've conditioned lot two. And I agree, the language is, is a little challenging, but it says any future re-subdivision of lot two will require both parcels to share a common drive and route rock outcroppings on lot two shall be preserved. At the time the subdivision was approved, only lot two at eleven acres had adequate space to accommodate an additional lot, even including open space requirements. I'll note for the commission that I did review the zoning regulations enforced at the time in the section six one thirty-one requirements for combined driveways where you had two lots next to each other was operative as well as the prohibition to have more than two rear lots adjoining each other. So at first take, I'd say, I hope the commission will find that this is neither a subdivision or a re-subdivision. So the note is an opposite to this application.
Why wouldn't it be? If it's already existing on the map, on, on the filed map, why wouldn't it carry? Why wouldn't?
Well, I think it's operative going forward, and I would like. So can I tell you how I want to address the underlying concerns?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the latitude. As it relates to the.
Go ahead. So as it relates to the development and, and what you're proposing to do, because I'm still really confused about this.
So as it relates to the development, I'm hoping that this commission will find this is not a subdivision or particularly a re-subdivision. So tonight, we don't have to address that note. However, I would like the note to remain, or the applicant has authorized me to suggest that that note remain operative going forward, number one.
Okay.
Number two, the lot line revision will create the impact. So it's going to do what we want to do because lot two becomes a rear lot, which is adjoining lot three, which is a rear lot. And section six one thirty-one of the zoning regulations is going to require that they have a shared driveway. I provided staff with a draft easement, and I would recommend a condition on the lot line revision approval that that easement is either recorded contemporaneously with the easement map or prior to development. I think the map has to come first to create the right record, reference points in the land records. As it relates, and that could be further reviewed and approved by both staff and the law department. Again, I've given you a draft form.
Yes, but we have not, we have, okay, all right. Okay, so basically, you would be, you're amenable and, and agree that all the, all the note, that previous, the notes on the previous maps will carry forward and that the notes now being requested by DPW will be added as well as the, the draft driveway easement document and map.
Correct. So the, the notes are going to be, the notes that Scott has to update the language for drainage, those notes are added to our MYLAR.
Okay.
Restating the note one from sixty forty-six on the MYLAR for the lot line revision, taking exception to updating it from lot two to lot two R, because we'll have a revised lot, so.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's going to, so the notes on the previous maps will be updated and carried forward.
That's correct.
To reflect the revision. Okay.
That's correct.
All right.
And then the condition of the approval is an easement is recorded either simultaneously with the MYLAR or with the land record map, or it's recorded prior to development of lot two or lot one, or you could say further development with lot three.
Well, it's really, so the easement, okay, but the easement is between lot one R, between lot one R.
It's two R and three. The back lot is three.
Right, but it's, but is, what about between lot one R to access two R from across one R?
Lot one, I want, I'm, we, today I have three lots and three driveways. If you approve this application, I'm going to have three lots and two driveways. I'm going to have one driveway that serves the back lot three and two R, and I'm going to have only one driveway that serves lot one. That's a one R. That's a child of the, the regulation six one thirty-one. It requires it. I can't negotiate otherwise.
Okay.
So we get our nineteen eighty-two inland wetlands, not too bad. Forty years later, we get their recommendation implemented.
Isn't that amazing? I mean, we were laughing. We were just stunned because we, you heard us say yesterday, we think we're being so innovative when we tell people to protect ledge and, and reduce the number of curb cuts in there with somebody in nineteen eighty-two who is requiring it. We're not so smart. Okay.
You're plenty smart. This is a great commission. I'm pleasure to appear.
Another one, what did we do? People are being nice to us today. Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. All right, okay.
Rock out cropping. The eighty-two to eighty-four maps, all of the maps I looked at had a number of rock outcroppings that were indicated partially located on lot two. There are two rock outcroppings that remain. One is absolutely breathtaking. It's about a hundred feet long to the east. My, or more importantly, my client would never dream of destroying that. So we would accept as a condition of approval on either application that the rock outcrop to the east is preserved and regardless of subdivisions or not in the future. Number two, there is a small ledge that surfaces that's about on the, the line.
When you say to the east, you mean along the east, I, I don't have it open.
Yes, it's, it's, it's a really kind of adjoining the property line. And it is on, it's, it's shown on the topographical survey, and I have highlighted that in materials to staff.
Bianca, could you share it real fast?
That's on lot one, Madam Chair.
Sure, give me one sec.
And then there's a smaller outcropping, Madam Chair and members of the commission, that's kind of on the existing lot line. And what I'd like to do is preserve that that as it's surfacing today, because we do not know its subterranean characteristics, is also preserved. And you'll know.
And where's that? Bianca, when Bianca brings it up, because I, I don't have it open.
That's going to be kind of directly behind the house, so it's going to interrupt the patio. But the owner has a strong environmental ethic and he thought it was beautiful. And I was pleased to hear that and to get to present this request to you.
Casey, would you like me to bring up the topo from the town G I S map or?
If you have any of, any of the S E minor maps, I can indicate it from those maps. Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
All right, now this is, okay, lot two.
Perfect. If you can hold right there where you're indicating, thank you, Bianca, with the mouse. That's that longer ledge that's on lot one.
Okay, and where's the second one?
The second one is if you look right where the note says fifty-foot side. So if you follow the existing line that splits lot one and lot two, come up from the cul-de-sac, make the right angle, go up, stop right there, and then you can see that there's a rock outcropping in the center.
So it's between lots one and two R.
About a hundred and. About a hundred and seventy feet from the northerly property line.
Could you drop it down a second a li- a little bit more, Bianca? Okay. All right.
Now, Madam Chair, while we have this map on, I'm, i- i- is that? You don't have to agree, but is that a good starting point?
You know, we wanna save all of these.
Those are the two that are left, and one of them's not even on lot two. I, I think this is a good act of preservation. I think we're doing something good and beautiful, importantly.
Well, and so, um, you can take it down, I think, Bianca. Uh, so while we have, uh, we're on the topic of, uh, your client being environmentally oriented, would you be able to reply to the conservation comments from nine twenty-seven?
Absolutely. When I met with Alex to discuss those and when I reviewed the comments, uh, one of the things that I felt was a big question was sort of, what are we doing for site disturbance and how are we losing trees? And we went back to S E minor, they had the information and responded quickly, which we were grateful for. They added the tree line to the map and what it indicated that, uh, which was my experience in visiting the site, is that no development proposed under these applications is going to occur within the tree line or really even approaching the tree line. So I think that would also add some of those concerns. Number two, in nineteen eighty-four, the property was developed and, and it was, there was a single family home, I believe, uh, in the location where lot one was. And then you had the barn back on lot three, and the rest of the property were horse paddocks. And so they were really relatively not like cut lawn, but it's short, you know, because they, they eat the, um, the grass in the paddocks. Now, that area has sat because there's, uh, surveying equipment and other devices there, so the horses haven't been there. But if, if you look at the maps going back, and if you look at importantly, the S E minor topographical surveys, I don't see that twenty trees were removed from the property. But back to deal time, we have a great client. I'm very lucky, and he's got a strong environmental ethic. And so we did provide a landscape plan, but perhaps I could give that a little more color to help you address conservation's concerns. We'd like to propose that we submit at time of permit approval an updated landscape plan that will include a minimum of ten native shade trees, a minimum of twenty native evergreen trees, and ten fruit trees. And while I acknowledge that fruit trees are not native, uh, they do provide exceptional habitat benefit.
Time out for a sec, time out. So one of the things is, one of the questions that is being raised by conservation is, we don't know how many trees are being removed. So before you give us numbers of the trees that are, that are be coming in, we'd like to know what's being lost and therefore what's being replaced, and that hasn't not been given to us if it was given to us today, having seen it. So that's the first thing.
To you, but not in a format that is readily ascertainable. If you look at the S E minor topographic survey, these are horse paddocks, they just didn't happen to have trees. When I looked at the historic maps going back to the eighties, there were some clumps of maples and some other trees that were off to the edges of the property. The, you know, over forty years, some of those trees are there, but there's really no trees that are proposed to be removed as part of this application because the lot was primary, everywhere where we're working was in active use.
So, uh, so she has several, okay, so the, first of all, we're being in its, we, the comment comes up a couple of times, is to, is to give us the number of trees that are being removed, the replacement. Then, um, she talks about although you have the planted areas that you could do more to limit impervious, you could do and replace it with vegetated, uh, and that, um, you could do a little better with the diversity of the species. She's got a lot of comments on this. Let me ask you this, those are site plan related. I would like to see a formal, this is a lot more change that, you know, we did an application tonight where we said, hey, keep working with the applicant, and here's what you need to do on the landscaping, the, the buffer needs to be ten. This is broader. Wha- what I'd like you to do is to come back in with a response in full to the conservation comments, as well as what staff has raised on the site plan. But, and so we, if it is okay with the commission, if we could leave the site plan open, however, I believe that you have given us enough information at this point that we could move with the lot line change and that that would advance you towards your project because you can begin to get the filing and you can begin to move forward. Are, are you amenable to that?
I'm amenable to that, um, but only on the condition that one more time that you consider with, that since nineteen eighty-four, maybe, maybe twenty trees have been removed and the top, the, I, I know that plan is scaled down small a- a- and I had to stare at it for a long time, and I looked at G I S maps. Maybe twenty trees in forty years have removed from the site, and I'm proposing planting a minimum of forty. And thirty of those are gonna be native and ten are gonna be exceptional for the habitat.
For which we deeply thank you and your client because that's exactly what we're looking for people to offer, and we're very grateful if your client is listening. We're hoping to get there with the Rick's, um, landscape regulations at the end of the month, but in the meantime, we're very grateful for that. Uh, if you guys would also take a look at some of the other comments she makes where she's asking for a slight, for different types of things with the plantings, it would be even better. So if you could just come back to us on that, I'm assuming Katie's gonna say the next meeting is still okay for one more application? It won't be long, guys. It won't be long because it's all, it's outstanding is really this issue of the landscaping. And just to respond to those and to get something that I just hate to not have it well documented.
Try to, to eliminate a lot of applications around that meeting already, but well, I mean, we'll, we'll sort it out.
Okay, so, all right, okay.
Thank you, Katie. Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, last thing for your motion. I just want to, uh, remind, I know you don't need reminding, but, uh, we did propose an alternative pedestrian easement. That's a a contingent pedestrian easement. That easement only comes into play if the open space is transferred to an, um, an association or entity that's not made up of the owners of lot one, two, and three.
Okay, I missed this. I, it did, we talked about it at the briefing and I'm blanking. Okay, so could you, I did need to be reminded. Could you just run that by me again?
There is a alternative proposed pedestrian easement. That pedestrian easement is a contingent easement. It comes into play only if the open space area for the total three lots is transferred to an, um, an entity that is not comprised of the owners of lots one, two, and three, of which it is currently. So when you see the Mylar, you're going to see that the easement that runs through the center of the development, which was Mr. McRice's keen observation, um, we had submitted, um, but he had not reviewed prior to the briefing, um, the alternative easement to the side of the property, to the east side.
Got it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Katie.
All right. Okay. Any more questions from the commission? Do you have any comments from the public? All right. Does anybody object to closing the subdivision application? Um, oh, you actually, yeah, you fa- filed the subdivision. The subdivision application at this time, does anybody object? No. Okay, so this application is hereby closed, seeing no objection to closing it, and, uh, we will make a motion.
We got public comment, right? I'm sorry, I forget whether you asked that or not.
I asked for it and nobody raised their hand. Okay. I've remembered pretty much every time tonight, it's kind of like, I need a little gold star thing. Okay, so, uh, we're gonna leave the site plan application open. We're hoping to accommodate it on the next meeting, and, uh, we're excited because, um, of what this, what your client will do, Mister, Mister O'Donnell, uh, because we are working on these new landscape regulations that we've been working on for Katie, how long now? A year and a half? Something like that. And it'll be interesting to see if what he, who you guys propose lines up with where we're headed. Because you're really, you're committed to this, and we're hoping, given that the tree density, we're trying to improve canopy. Katie can share the draft, uh, we, of it, if you guys wanna look at it. I think it's open, right? Yeah, so Katie can happily share our new landscape regulation draft, and you guys can take a look and say, here we are trying really hard to do something and whether or not it works.
That sounds great.
Cool. All right, that'd be fun because you can be kind of a test case since you have, you're working with a client who's really interested in being environmentally sustainable. Uh, so with that, uh, in regard to, uh, La France Developments application, uh, La France Development LLC and Fifty La France LLC application for a final subdivision for a proposed lot line revision between two existing parcels to transfer four point oh three six acres of land from fifty-two La France Road to sixty La France Road. And that these parcels located at fifty-two and sixty La France Road in the RA four, uh, the commission, uh, finds that this is neither a subdivision nor a re subdivision. In so doing, the commission makes the following, uh, comments. The conservation department issued, issued, uh, a comments stating, noting no objection to the proposed lot line revision on the twenty-seventh of September. I W W A issued a green sheet sign-off dated seven twenty-two, indicating that no permit is required for the lot line revision. The CEO, uh, endorsed for sign-off on the fifth of October. The health department issued comments on nine twenty-two, indicating approval of the proposed development of sixty La France and relocation of the septic system serving the stable building for fifty La France Road. Uh, a Mylar shall be filed on the Greenwich Land Records and include all the standard notes for subdivision maps and the notes on the previous maps filed, which shall be updated to reflect the impact of this lot line revision, as well as include the additional notes requested by D P W engineering for the lot line revision map and the drive, the, the draft driveway easement document and map to be provided for access to the rear lots. The, um, uh, the notes shall make reference to the protection of route, the rock outcroppings on lot one to along the east being preserved and shall also note the preservation of the ledge along the um, other side, along the western side, along lots one and two. Uh, another note that shall be included is that the applicant has proposed an alternate easement should such circumstances arise, requiring it based on the change of ownership of the open space. The, one more note that should be placed on the subdivision map is that on approval of this map, the owner agrees with the town that unless otherwise specified, the areas within at least ten feet of the central line of any drainage facility, ditch or stream shown thereon are dedicated for drainage and that no building or other structure shall be located thereon. We finally note that further development of the property will be subject to the normal review process and approval of all the applicable agencies. And with that, um, and subject to any outstanding departmental and staff comments, uh, I ask for a second. Mister Levy has seconded. Mister Lowe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mister Wells?
Aye.
Mister Yaski?
Aye.
Albin is also aye, and with that, the motion passes five, nothing. All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Folks, it's six forty-five. We now have, um, we have two things left before us. We have a discussion item and, um, the proposed moratorium on six ninety-nine. Do you wanna proceed or do you want? Proceed?
Well, would one, would one of them take less time than the other and then split it, or are we expecting both, uh?
Can we just take a very short break?
Well, can we take it after one, one of these, or no?
Well, then we'll only have one thing to do.
Okay.
So, um, Katie wants a very short break. Sometimes people.
Obviously, it's up to the commission.
No, you go, you, you know, we don't want you to have.
Yeah, but what, what, to go down Peters, wha- what are you anticipating? Cause you.
Fifteen minutes.
And this goes on for four hours and there's no dinner.
That's right. Let's just take fifteen minutes and we'll be back at seven oh two.
Great.
I'm like asking questions. Almost ended the meeting just now by accident.
I don't do that.
Bianca, normally, um, there's something that, that, um, Patrick puts up that says we're on break, but I, you probably. Okay, if you don't know where it is.
I'm not as fast as he is. I'm just writing a word doc.
Okay, yeah, it's fine. All right. Okay, we're just waiting for Peter Love. There he is.
Not waiting any longer.
Okay. All righty. And so, uh, we move on to the next application, which if I might mention, number fifteen. The Town of Greenwich Planning and Zoning Department staff for a text amendment to section six ninety-nine, conversion to accessory housing in our buildings, building zone regulations, and it is proposal to implement a six-month moratorium uh, on this regulation. And Madam, is it still DeLuca?
Uh, now, yes.
Okay.
It's not, but why confuse the matter? Yeah. Um, so you know that the, um, topic of accessory housing was, um, quite robust over the last few months as a result of the opt-out discussion before the R T M. And as you know, there was a lot of opinion put forth about how the accessory housing should be handled. As I noted in the staff report, some felt that it was fine the way it was. Others felt that there should be more flexibility and there should be no restrictions on who can, um, on who the user would be of these units. And, uh, as we've discovered also, there's some changes to the state building code, which could have an impact. So what we're trying to do is get a better handle on all of these moving parts. We had a discussion item at the last meeting um, where we in- invited some comments on it and, um, also discussed timeline. And so what we've decided to do, staff level has proposed a moratorium at this point so that we could study the issue. The idea was, as to what would happen during the moratorium period would be public discussion items, um, excuse me, public discussion sessions where we could discuss, um, what, how, how best to proceed and, and whatever changes might be appropriate moving forward.
Comments from the commission?
Do we need to set a date certain when the moratorium?
Six months from the time that we voted, which is.
Okay, today. Yeah.
Yeah, if somebody could do the math, we could, we could be fancy whenever we make a decision. What?
I think it's April.
April what? And you get, okay, so April thirteenth. Okay. Um, so here, uh, some comments, um, it's interesting, one of the reasons that Katie is proposing that we just stop and take a deep breath is that there are several different points of views from residents on this. Uh, some people really wanna expand and the, the use of ADUs. I believe there is still some objection and. I believe there is still some objection in town and we should hear out those people and how their objections could be addressed. And it's a wonderful thing that we can continue to tinker with this to meet the objectives of the P O C D, which is to increase housing diversity and the needs of our residents. We've talked a lot about in the past, enabling people to age in place, giving the families of people that are disabled an option, potentially the keeping this affordability component that we have now, but what we heard was even though we were asked to, to, to have the affordability requirement, there are people who would drop it. And what the big limiting factor is Katie told you guys yesterday is about getting the permits and the is the cost. So how do you get people to really do it? And how do you get them to move forward on it? So those are, those are my two cents. Anything else?
Yeah, I was gonna say, are we clear on the definition? I mean, it seems to me that ought to be front and center.
When you say definition, yes, there is a definition of what an accessory dwelling unit is. Yes, there is.
But what, what? I mean, it's, it's going to be up to the town to decide what its definition is, right? Within the constraints of the.
I think what an accessory dwelling, you know, do you want to go to 1500 square feet instead of 1200 square feet? Oh, wait, wait. I always get that number wrong, Katie.
It's 12, right?
Yes.
1200. So do you want to go to 1500 instead? It's something I've thought about. Should we allow them to be bigger? We would still keep the restriction on the square footage of the total as a, to keep the ratio relative to the, to the total house.
My point is we have to start with those, I believe, having common ground and understanding on what we're talking about.
Well, we have a lot of that. As you look at the regulations, we've spent a lot of time decide, you know, defining all of that, but for example, there are still people who will say to you that 1200 square feet is too small. We had someone who spoke at, you know, during, when we were doing the opt out. If that person lives in a very big house in a 10,000 square foot house and we limit the accessory unit to be no more than 35% and we just leave it at that, you could create a 3,000 square foot accessory apartment. And why not? Because you're still not changing the character of that structure. You're still.
You're changing de facto the zoning?
No. No, you're not because we've, we've allowed, okay, for starters, we've, oh, we've allowed someone to have, since we've changed the square footage a little bit, but this has existed in our regulations since 1981. Is it Katie or 87? I always get that number wrong, but pretend it's 87. And initially they were 700 square feet. And we took it up to 1200 and no more than 35% of the FAR. I'm doing this. Yeah, so now we have an opportunity. One of the pieces of feedback we heard is, do we want to make them bigger? That doesn't change the zoning. That's just saying, what do you want to do? The other thing is a lot of the towns around us were very concerned and about restricting how big a secondary building could be on a property. And we talked about that yesterday with an application that has been postponed is how big, if it's not within the existing structure, how big can a secondary structure be? I'm not asking you to solve the problems tonight. I'm just saying we have an opportunity to be creative about this because we've kept control of our regulations. So let's try to do that. Any other thoughts?
We're just educating the public on all that is important too, because as you pointed out the other day, people are, some people are seemingly ignorant of what is.
Absolutely.
Is. So I just think it's got to be part of our, that should be part of our, our goal.
If I was to give Katie, oh, we says to you guys that the biggest reason is complying with zoning. Well, one of the things complying with building code, not zoning, the building code regulations. One of the things is we know the building codes is changing right now. So that's the thing. But the other point you guys made yesterday, it's so important is people don't know you can do this. And I've been stopped on the street so many times by folks would say, why doesn't Greenwich have something like this? And I say, well, we've had it since the eighties. Now, do we need to amend it and make it more liberal? That's what we're here to look at and that's what we need a breathing space to do. Anything else?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Just a clarifying question. Six month moratorium. So are we saying we're having a six month moratorium? Because we were proposing an amendment to the existing regulations regarding accessory housing units. So if someone a month later comes in under our existing regulations, can they apply? No, so nobody, no building, no nothing, no anything for six months.
That's why it behooves us to move very quickly. If we could move quicker than six months, it would behoove us to do that. Because for the time being, nobody can apply and we want to, we want to allow these and expand it. Katie, you were going to say something?
Yeah, you can remove the moratorium prior to six months should, should you know what you're doing at month three.
But I guess my question, it's been on the books since 1981 and now we're doing a six month. I, I get it because we're going to be working on new regulations, but if we were somewhat happy and approve the previous ones, I, can't we, you know, act on, under the existing regulations if there is an application? I know there aren't that many. And then work on doing the amendment. I don't see why we can't, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, too many broadly different perspectives regarding our existing regulation for us to be comfortable after we heard all that input at the RTM was going forward with continuing it as it is. There were just too many questions for too long. That's my take.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that it would be interesting to, to understand if there was somebody who was go, was going to apply for one. But I think, you know, essentially it's really, we figured out it's really just a four month.
Right.
Uh, issue and then I don't think it, it would really interfere with somebody's.
Well.
The, the applications that we've received recently have been processed quickly through planning and zoning. And as the chairman said, the issue is once they get to the building department, they are deterred by what's involved there. So I think this also allows us to potentially get involved in what's happening at the state legislation level and see whether there's something we could do to lobby along those lines also. So I mean, it's so bad that the planning and zoning department and the building department got together and wrote a memo that explains in great detail what's required from a building code standpoint. So even though we always had directed people to the building department and said, go and make sure you understand the entire process. This way it's part of the, the description of all of that is part of the application from planning and zoning so that people know before they bother coming into us for an application. So as I said, the ones that we've received recently weren't actually constructed due to building code questions. And I think that, I think the biggest issue other than the flexibility of these units is whether or not the an accessory structure should be permitted. If you recall, that had been proposed in the previous iteration that we had done months ago and even amongst the commission, there was hesitation to do that. That's where you start getting into this feel of the, you know, the concern that the whole town will turn into what looks like two family or just too much, too much overbuilding really throughout the town. And as has been stated a lot that 60% of the lots in town are actually two family. And some, and a lot of that is three family also. So most of the lots do allow for multiple residences already as it is. And even within, even within the larger zones, other secondary structures are permitted up to 1200 square feet, whether that be guest, guest homes or, you know, garages, gyms, whatever it is. So we already have a lot of outbuildings permitted as it is. So it's, it's less of an issue on neighborhoods in terms of traffic and whatnot with parking on the street, but the traffic itself has been listed as a concern in the past. Not much recently, and I think that's appropriate, but it certainly in the past, that's, that's been a concern that's been raised.
Good. Thank you. Thank you both.
But, but I would say that, that, that even though they're two thirds or whatever that number is, I have multi-family structures, et cetera. The, if you look at the overall real estate, I mean, square footage, area acreage, et cetera.
More of Greenwich is single family. If you look at acreage.
Right. And, and, and that's really, that's really at the, at the heart of all of this.
So more residents live in, on less than a third of an acre, 60% of the lots are zoned less than a third of acre, an acre of multifamily.
Right.
But you do have enormous swaths of property that are single family and that are a great part of the community. And how do you address that? And what do you do with the accessory structures? And now that they're changing the building code for the tiny houses, this was raised at a seminar that we attended at, and the day after, was it the day after we did the RTM thing, we went to the seminar on the tiny houses. And so it's what do we want to do with the accessory structures? How big can they be? Because if they work with the building, the existing building, why can't we actually open it up some more? So that's kind of a lot of the thinking. It's a, it's, don't want to throw out the baby with the bathwater, but what we do want to do is innovate for greater inclusion. Go ahead, Dennis.
I, I appreciate the thought, but I think you're, you're at a point where we either want the moratorium or not. That's number one. And number two, how is it we're going to revise this anyhow? Is there certain individuals or is there subcommittee? Going through the whole commission, yeah, you have to come back to the commission, but are you going to do workshops for the public again?
We're gonna do workshops with the public. Yes, that's what we're gonna do because we really need a consensus from the community. I got very different views. They have migrated some and they have opened up some, but there are still some very different views out there. And it would make sense to have workshops. That said, I do find, as we always joke, that it takes the commission 20 minutes to say hello. So we would probably be much better off if we let Katie draft a proposal after we've had the workshops and submit it to us and we'll give her some input and guidance. But let's not us write it because it doesn't go really well. Would we write it?
How you say, and I'll salvo, Katie?
You know, what works really well is today Katie and I were talking about a different regulation and I sent her some input. And then she'll ask you guys and then she integrates all of that and goes forward with it. That's works best after we've had the workshops. But when we get it together in a room and we all write it, it, it's a little more laborious.
Okay, I'm ready to vote.
Okay, so before you guys vote, I think we have some public. Yes, we do. Alrighty.
Good, good.
Okay.
First workshop.
Well, um, maybe. Alrighty, so the first speaker, if anybody wishes to speak on the moratorium on our accessory dwelling unit regulation. Oh, by the way, it also has the wrong name, which really makes us crazy. Oh, okay. So we've got Mr. Abbott and then Mr. Alexander will speak. Mr. Abbott, if you would unmute. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you have two computers on, could you turn off the second one? Cause I'm getting an echo.
I think I'm, I'm just on one.
Okay, somebody was echoing. Alright, go ahead.
Thanks so much. I'm just here briefly to testify opposition to the moratorium. I recognize the mission does use moratoria under limited circumstances to freeze development provisions while it considers amendments. And while I strongly encourage the commission to revise its accessory apartment ordinance, I, I don't think a moratorium is appropriate in this instance. In his book, Connecticut Land Use Law in Practice, Robert Fuller states, it quote, "It is difficult to find any language in section 8-2 which justifies a moratorium of any kind." And while the Connecticut Supreme Court has upheld moratoria under very limited circumstances, the American Planning Association advises that moratoria are a tool to be used, quote, "in times of heavy development pressure." And Greenwich, from my understanding, is plainly not facing heavy development pressure for accessory apartments. Under its existing regulations, I, I wish there was, there was more development. But given the, the hurdles that have been identified, I don't think there's a huge concern that there's going to be too many accessory apartments approved under the existing ordinance as it considers changes. I think a lot of RTM members have expressed a concern that Greenwich overregulates ADUs and then its ordinance is too restrictive. And I, I think having a moratorium of six months backslides in the wrong direction, particularly as interest rates rise and the capital necessary to invest in those units becomes more expensive. Even a short moratorium does come with real costs. So while I applaud the commissions, looking again at the ordinance, I, I have to strongly oppose a moratorium at this time since it would cut off applications during that period.
Thank you very much, Mr. Abbott. The next speaker is Peter Alexander. And I will be right there, Mr. Alexander. My computer's been cranky all day. I did finally get everything to print, Bianca. My printer kept saying printing now and nothing would come out. It was really frustrating.
This working now?
Yes, sir. Well, you can go ahead. Peter Alexander, please go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I was wondering where the 10% came from.
What 10% sir?
We are under Hartford's perusal stating we need to be a 10% for.
Yes. Yeah.
Why 10%?
Um, I don't know. It's a number that they picked in 1989. As I understand, it was not particularly scientific. It was just based on, on assessment of overall state need, a ballpark assessment of state need at the time. And what has happened since then is that the cities exceed the target and the state overall has not moved significantly on that, on that 10%. And uh, one of the things we need to think about is we've been trying to get a piece of that 10% with our accessory apartments and we're going to rethink that, among other things.
Well, thank you. You answered my second question before I got to it.
We try.
The, it seems arbitrary, capricious frankly. I mean, why not 90%? Why not 2%? I mean, where does 10% come from? I mean, every, it's so different.
I can, I can send staff. I have a. So Mr. Alexander, one of the most prominent land use attorneys in the country wrote a paper on this law about 10 years after it came out. I can send it to staff and have them send it to you in which he analyzes how they went about, he was on the committee that wrote the law. And you can, you can read the history of it, but I've given you the recap and the law's been around since 1989.
And what if we don't conform? What are the?
There are no penalties at this point in time. There are no penalties at this point in time, but every year there is a proposal before the legislature to impose some sort of punishment for the municipalities that don't conform.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that's it for the public comment. Hey, would somebody like to make a motion? I mean, this one's not hard, guys. Okay, so since we're ending the public hearing and this is our last item on the public hearing and we don't have any, any other pending decisions. 14 has been withdrawn.
Okay.
I mean, postponed, postponed. I apologize. So if there is no objection, this, may we close this application at this time for the moratorium?
Yes.
So hearing no objection, this application is hereby closed. If I may, did I see a volunteer, like somebody wiggling around? No, okay. So I had told, I had talked to Arn earlier today, just. So I had told I had talked to Arn earlier today, just so you guys know before I make this one, I will send out the notes the next time we're doing this and y'all can make all the decisions you want because you heard it. I write it out pretty much in full. You don't have to read all of those notes that need to go in. You know about the drainage easement and the signature block for the chair and all that. I like to put them in because you'd be surprised how often that stuff doesn't happen. Okay, so I hereby move approval of the planning and zoning department staff proposal to create a moratorium, to implement a moratorium for a period of six months, ending April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three on our our regulation six ninety-nine, the conversion to accessory housing. And that this this moratorium is being implemented in response to community requests and to allow time for more community input and work on the necessary changes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Levy has seconded. Mr. Yaski, how do you vote?
Hi.
Mr. Low?
Hi.
Mr. Wells?
Hi.
Albin is also high. And with that, the motion passes five, nothing. And we go to our last item. The discussion item. Bye bye, Mr. Bazili. It's only seven twenty-eight.
Thank you. I don't know what I'll do with the rest of the night.
Well, I don't know how we did it. It's just we bombed right through it. We never do that. It's miraculous.
Oh, it is. Make it a habit. All right.
Oh, we won't. Bye bye, Mr. Bazili. See you next time. All right. So with that, John T. Mr. Tessie, anytime you're ready. You just need to unmute, Mr. Tessie, and also turn on your screen. Okay, he's coming. There he is. Hello.
Hi there.
Okay, so first of all, is your house in Naples really okay?
Yes, thank you for asking.
Okay, good.
Really amazing.
Amazing, because I it seems there was terrible damage down there. Alrighty, so with this, did you listen in yesterday at the briefing?
Actually, I did not get a chance.
All right. Well, Mr. Bristol might have been there and filled you in, but we remembered when this application was first before us.
Yes.
And we reviewed the conditions that were made at the time. And we had a whole discussion about Mr. Bristol, in what he sent in the documents he sent to us, had said just no bar service and had neglected to include no restaurant service. But in fact, we I raised the question of should we consider some food service? Because what are people going to do up there? And with after COVID, there may be people for a long time that want the outdoor space. So that was one thing we asked. The other thing is
Yeah, I could let you finish, sorry.
Well, the other thing was, are you still doing that pool, right? That you had that pool up there that wasn't really a pool?
It's it's a shallow pool, kind of like a lap pool.
Oh, it is a lap pool. Okay, so the last time it wasn't. So it is going to you. You can swim in it. It's going to be four feet deep for swimming.
That's that. That's the thinking. I mean, there was some talk about it, but right now we'd like to have that option. It's going to come down to economics, load of the water. But yes, if not, then it'll be a feature. We like the option.
Okay, yeah, because the last time you proposed it as a feature and it wasn't.
Yeah, that was a load factor. And that was one of the considerations of why this didn't get built. If we're going to go through the effort there, does it make some sense to to?
To do a real pool?
Pool, which would
And then potentially have so I I so just as you think about to to me, you've you've in Mr. Bristol's narrative, he's got all the right conditions, which is no amplified music, the you know, the hours, all of that. We just don't want to have. Now that said, well, you do have residential down on the other side. So that said, the commission had a big discussion yesterday also about how much outdoor space you have there. And there were a couple of us who thought that you don't have enough, really, even though you have you have the parks nearby that that wharf, the waterfront part gets very full and very crowded. That was Mr. Levy. So those are our points to you is just, you know, when you think about it, post-COVID, how would you propose it? Because I I we'd like to hear your ideas when you come in with it.
Well, thank you. A couple of points. As I recall, we used if we didn't use, it was a purpose to using the phrase no restaurant use. It didn't say no food use.
Yeah.
The idea was you didn't want to have a bar because we have that service building on the north. I'm sorry, on the south side.
Correct.
And a number of commission members I know, I think I think you're the last woman.
No, McCray McCray says he was here. I didn't remember.
He may have been. He may have been an alternate not listed at the time.
Yeah. Yeah. So yes, the last commissioner standing, yeah.
The idea was, well, you didn't want to have, you didn't want to allow classic restaurant use. In other words, LaScal putting dining patrons up there. That's what that was the underpinning of that of that.
Wasn't who you
My recollection.
Yeah, it was probably what you were thinking and and you were because I remember talking to Maitland afterwards and saying, you know, I'm not sure restaurants really the right word. But anyway, okay.
Because the idea was no bar, no, no, no permanent bar. The idea is people can drink and they could have food, but they're supposed to be, they are to be, they're required to be guests of the hotel. And you could serve them remotely. It's like just like rooms, basically ordering room service. That was the idea. You could have room service up there, but you can't have permanent facilities to have a bar to hang out in that type of atmosphere.
Okay, so and then you're going to figure out your pool issue and you're gonna
Talking about is that be may come down to flexibility in terms of an approval allowing it. But it become maybe they'll get all rectified. I don't know where they are in their engineering at this particular point in time. It was the engineering that really caused the delay. And then, of course, we ran into COVID, which was the last year I think we possibly could have started the construction.
Yeah, and
Yeah.
Yeah. And and what you could always do is, you know, you only have a pool for a very small number of months a year. You could consider having a winter amenity instead.
A skating rink.
No, I was thinking more about, you know, some sort of spa jacuzzi thing that
Well, people kind of like
Yeah, but you're not our job.
Again, there's a depth issue because you know, the more water you put in, but I'll bring that up. We may have talked about it back when I just don't remember.
We did. We had some. I think we did. But all we're I think. So tell us what you're looking at in terms of uses. I certainly, from my perspective, I would like to be more flexible than we than I was in two thousand fifteen because we have COVID in between. And making a space for people to just go relax outdoors seems like a good idea to me, but I don't want to influence anyone. I'm just saying.
Yeah. Well, that's the idea. That's what it is supposed to be. We certainly I need to be in you were back in two thousand fourteen. Cognizant of the residential use, basically a Delamar court, really. And actually, I I'd spoken to well, John Ferrari actually lives there. And I talked to the another gentleman there. So I I think people are comfortable, but they are expecting and I that we're going to adhere to the conditions regarding dawn to dusk.
Oh, yeah, because you'll hear from people in that.
Yeah, no, no, it's only right. It's a balance. And that's what this is supposed to be. It's an outdoor feature. We don't have much outdoor land, if you will, as you know, we have a little little, as you probably know, we have a very wonderful, well-used public access easement. But we have just a patch of green in the back where people can sit out and it's and it's been something that that's been brought up. And I I believe they'll they won't do it for this season. But the goal is to get is to get everything lined up for construction next year, assuming we're getting your approval. We also need the Board of Board of Appeals approval. But I appreciate your flexibility and
Well, the commission may not agree.
Space component is now is now highlighted a bit more.
The commission may not agree with me. I was revisiting how I was reacting in two thousand fifteen. And I feel differently today.
Okay.
You were more amenable? Yeah, I know. It happens. Some people, you know, like they get looser and other people. Yeah, so
I mean, I was more amenable than you were in two thousand.
Yeah, yeah. So Mr. Levy was more flexible. So there were actually three of us who were there. And Mr. Levy was more open to it. Mr. Levy is was more open to it. So and it sounds like he may still be open to it. Yes. Or did you become?
I think that, you know, you you made some good points.
Okay.
The consistency is that, as they say, the hobgoblin of little minds. So it's good to be flexible.
Yes, I know.
We appreciate it.
It saves us in court.
The idea was, look, I think the point is, here's some it's always a challenge when you do something like retrofitting a building, as a number of you know, and getting up to a roof, we have to bring in an elevator. That's why we need a variance. And we have to have the proper means of egress. So it's that tower, if you will, on the which would be on the east east side of the building that is a primary reason we need the variance from the Board of Appeals. Are we will go before them. I I suppose I don't want to overreach. It's fair to say that it doesn't appear to be as a result of this pre-application meeting. We don't really have any objections from I know there's no formal vote, but
The commission has expressed no concerns at this time with you with you submitting that application. However, the the commission has indicated a desire to preserve at least some of the conditions imposed by the ZBA at the at the time of the first review of this application. So you're going to have to get that, you know, so remember, some of the conditions came from them.
I think, yeah, well, by the time we got to the Board of Appeals, we actually gave them your conditions.
Oh, okay. I didn't remember.
That's where they came from. It wasn't vice versa.
Oh, I thought it was the other way around. Okay, I didn't remember. Okay, so the commission will still make will has indicated that it will carry forward the condition. It would be interested in the conditions on the original.
Can I? I mean, Mr. Tessie, you you were making a distinction at one point about saying, well, we really, we're looking at this as perhaps room service. But to say if one of the conditions is no bar service, well, I would argue, you know, we need to define that, what that is, and to say no bar or restaurant uses. I guess it's all in the definition of use, but but you're suggesting, and I'm not giving an opinion here, but I'm just saying, it seems like you're suggesting that we would want to have some kind of liquid and solid refreshment being able to be brought to bear on that place.
Thank you, Mr. Low. What happened is in Mr. Levy and Chairman Elman King. There we have a we have a building that's up. It's that's up on up on the roof. It's in a fair amount of space there. It's used now for storage. And there was a conversion. There was a concern of some commission members, and I would imagine our chairman was one of them about allowing any even a service bar up there, which is kind of cumbersome. And so that's where we have no bar came from. The restaurant uses, I recall, as I said earlier, really had to do with no, no guests of the restaurant, turning it into restaurant economics. And we're perfectly comfortable with the with the would obviously the LaScal outdoor dining area. In fact, I want to just mention something to you about that while I have your attention. But if we're going to come in with something, we'd like to be able to have have a station up there that is enclosed in that area which which would be most helpful for with refreshments, probably some snacks, rather than every time go traipsing up and down stairs in elevators. So
All I was suggesting
We would we would come in since the door was open. I'm just giving the idea that what we probably would ask for. And I think we'll have a sketch of that. I'm going to ask our architects to prepare a sketch of what that would be in that building, but it would simply be for service.
No, it should be clarified explicitly. So because what you're what you're now describing, and I'm not, I'm not rendering any judgment on it at all. But what you're describing seems to be somewhat of a departure from at least my interpretation of the language from two thousand fifteen. And I it's not a criticism. It's nothing. It's just that we need to have publication. That's all.
Yeah, no, it's it's kind of cryptic here, but I lived through it. But but as I said, I I appreciate it in you know, the strict domain thing is no loud music going to dusk.
I just like to
Customers only of the hotel and just think if we can have a Sorry?
I just like to interject it. It's okay. I I was just wanted to get a little clarification of how important an elevator is to the roof for you. What if what if you only had stair access?
We have it. We have a we can't do it because it is too large. It's ADA required.
Oh, okay.
That's then that's the reason, one of the reasons we were able to get get the variance from the board. Believe me, it's not cheap to do that. But we have no choice. It's ADA required.
I see.
Okay. All right.
I view if I beg your indulgence for one second, because I was going to ask staff. Speaking of the outdoor area in the back, in our back area in the building where we have LaScal, I believe it's probably most of you know, maybe so, maybe not, but we have an outdoor dining area that we've had for the last twenty years plus, especially before that. And we have a trellis cover over it. And as you have experienced during more inclement inclement weather, we pull down some, what do you call that, plastic? And so what we're what we're looking at is to put a more structurally sound roof on that area. It would be open. I've met with Jody Couture. And he's can confirm that under our regulations, so long as, in this case, it would be the north and south areas are open, that we can put that awning up and that would have a more protective cover. And we could have a front, which would be windows, basically, that could open
I don't think I don't think the commission can answer you, Mr. Tessie.
No, my question. Here's my question.
But that's not you. What you've got before us is only the roof chairs.
No, I understand. No, no, no. Here's my question.
I think Katie can answer you.
Commission. Well, we can, because that would ordinarily be a site plan thing, not not a special permit thing. There's no floor airing out. Is that something that can be dealt with with staff? Or did we have to go to ARC with it? Or is that something you'd like to see us bringing to you?
Yeah, I told I told the owner of the property or whoever it was, their son who came and spoke, and I told them that I wanted to see what it was they were doing with respect to the enclosure. Obviously, we'd need architecture review, but since there was no change to the number of seats, no change to use, it wasn't impinging at all on the on the accessway, and there was no change to the FAR that, yes, it could be done administratively. The only thing was, though, they weren't sure they weren't a hundred percent on their concept when I met with them. So I had forwarded the presentation they gave me to Jody. He agreed or we agreed, and you've just represented what was stated that that it's okay to move those columns over and whatnot, and that it would be open. And that was the thing, that it would be open to the weather. So as long as, as I said, there's no change in the FAR, then it then we could handle it administratively.
Okay, you got your answer from the boss.
I got it. I did. Thank you, Katie. I just I think I I just wanted to make sure. But I know you spoke to Dixon. It's Charles's son.
Yes.
I we have everything on online here. So it's good because if it weren't that way, I would have incorporated into the filing for this. That's all for this application. But thank you. I apologize for taking an extra few minutes.
Okay. All right, okay.
Helps us all.
Alrighty, so with that, glad your house is good.
I appreciate it. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
And so with that, folks, 7:46 PM, if you want to hang out some more, you know, you can stay here on the Zoom, but otherwise.
What about the meeting schedule? Do we need to?
Oh, shoot, the meeting schedule. Yes, thank you. The meeting schedule. Almost forgot it. And yet I was, I remembered it yesterday. Okay, the meeting schedule. Somebody want to make a motion about it?
Motion to approve.
The, the P and Z and the architectural review schedules as submitted.
Has this been submitted to us? I look at the agenda.
Yeah, just click on the link in the agenda and other items, but that's okay. You're coming to all the meetings the rest of us are holding.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda, the schedules. Mr. Levy has seconded. Mr. Yaski, how do you vote?
Aye, I approve it.
Okay, Mr. Low?
I'm looking at it. I'll approve it. If it's similar to what it's been for the last several years, I'm, I'm good with it.
Right.
Okay, Mr. Wells? Mr. Levy?
Aye.
And Albin is also aye. And with that, the motion passes five, nothing, and we're really done now.
99.
Do we often have like three in a one month, like in October or November?
We do a few times, like two, two times a year we do that and then we're really grumpy for a while. It's, what's normally the case is when we haven't been able to schedule meetings. It used to be if we couldn't get into town hall or something, and the other thing that happens is sometimes coming back after the August break, we were so backed up, we'd have to add a meeting. Or if we have a huge application that we just can't hear when we're hearing other stuff. So sometimes we do.
Looking forward to seeing everybody tomorrow.
By 10:30 tomorrow morning, yes.
I am going to be a few minutes late. I have a 10 o'clock call.
Okay.
So I'll get off it as quickly as I can.
It's early and leave a few minutes early.
We will see you be early when you are early. You do not have that, you are not the record holder in that regard. Mr. Barilak?
I just wanted to take one second to mention to the commission what you and I discussed recently about having a, the potential of having a joint meeting of the commission and the Affordable Housing Trust Board to coordinate what, mostly to tell you guys what the board is up to. And I think coordination between the two of us is going to be critical. We're trying to achieve the same goals. And I think the, the trust has done enough work that it's, that we have something to talk to you about and have a conversation about. So I'm going to, I'm going to work with Katie and maybe Patrick and put something on the calendar in the coming weeks.
Be fantastic. And especially if we could do it, you guys, for when we have Mary, so that we're including all the new, you know, we've got our new commissioner on board as well. So she can learn about the trust.
When does Mary jump on board?
Not till November 1st because the RTM didn't realize how the dates.
Just, I got it. Okay, we don't need to go into, we don't need to throw the RTM.
Well, they do hundreds, they do hundreds of, of people and they didn't realize how the dates did or didn't overlap. So October 31st was when Victoria expired, so we have to wait till she's gone.
Maybe her term expired.
Yeah, hopefully she hasn't expired and, and we hope, or we wish her well.
No, all right. Okay, you guys, have a good evening.
Thank you.